Dave Gare, next to him is Lynn Carlson. My name is Mel Pins, the Board Chair. On my right is Marlaus Jones, and next to her is Cindy Smith. I will be joined here later this afternoon by our seventh member of the Board, Mr. Nathan Blake. I'll introduce our city staff. City's legal counsel is to my left, that's Glenna Frank. Down here in the front row there, Bert Drost, city planner, Eric Lundie, city planner, and Catherine Dostart, city planner. I'll go ahead and go through our procedure here today. For some of you, this may be the first time that you've been in front of us. You may be hoping this is the only time you'll have to be in front of us. So, I'll go ahead and go through our procedure here, but we'll help each of you through your individual agenda items, so don't worry about that. We'll guide you along here in the process. While this is a public, open meeting, it is a formal legal hearing process. The process is being recorded, and right now, we should be broadcasting live on the city's cable channel for those at home, or those who are up late at night in reruns. The Board members have received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendation for today's hearing. Copies of these agendas and the staff recommendations are available in the tray right outside the door here, so when I'm through with my opening comments, if you hadn't yet grabbed a copy of the agenda or the staff recommendations, feel free to step up and do so. This Board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief that is sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this Board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the Board must grant the requested relief. Otherwise, the Board must deny the requested relief. We will announce each appeal in the order as presented on the agenda. Staff will first give a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the Board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. The appellant or a representative of the appellant will then be allowed to speak. They will be given up to ten minutes to present their appeal. Anyone present in support of the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. The applicant will be allowed up to three minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if there is any opposition presented to their request. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the front left of the room, and begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address. If you're here as a resident in a personal capacity, give your home address. If you're here in a business or professional capacity, as an engineer, an attorney, et cetera, you can give your address of business. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations as have been presented. If necessary, the Board Chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. And we want to give everybody a fair shake here at today's hearing, but we have a number of agenda items to get through, so unless you want to stick around here until supper time with us, I would encourage everybody to, again, keep your comments related to the facts at hand and within our time constraints. After speakers have presented their comments, the Board will close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the Board will immediately deliberate the request. We will make a decision here today. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until late next week to go to the permit and development center if you would have needed to obtain any necessary building permits. This will allow the decision of this Board to be documented in the form of a decision and order that will be given to you, as well as our permit and development staff for their records. Any appeal that is approved by this Board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this Board, or such approval shall expire. In looking at the agenda, items listed on the first portion of the agenda, which is called the Consent Agenda, those items are not planned to be individually discussed unless there has been a change in the agenda, and we'll go over that in a minute. Items on the Consent Agenda will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report, unless there's an individual present in the audience or a member of this Board that requests that the item be removed from the Consent Agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. And I'll come back to that here in a minute as we review our Consent Agenda for today. The decisions of this Board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court, so if you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this Board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the District Court within thirty days of the filing of the Board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this Board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future items. All material written or otherwise used today as part of anyone's presentation needs to become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So if you have any photographs, documents, plans, or specifications that you want to share as part of your presentation, you either need to give those to staff for the record or allow them to make suitable copies. And just a couple of housekeeping items, we ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing that is in progress, and you're doing a very fine job of that. Also, ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Again, great job so far. And if you do need to use a restroom, you can leave through the doors here. You don't have to go down the stairs, walk past the staircase, and there are restrooms on your left. Subject to our length of our hearing today, we'll have a break around three or 3:30 if that's needed, and once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you are welcome to leave the hearing. So what we'll go ahead and do here is take a look at our basic agenda. Talk to Mr. Drost about that. Bert, to begin with, do we have any items that are withdrawn or have been requested for continuance?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, item number nine is the appeals at 4320 East 46th Street. They have requested that the hearing be continued to June 26th so that they can change the dimensions of the two lots that would be created.
Okay.
So, staff is supporting the continuance at this time.
Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to the variance request on item nine? Just raise your hand for the moment. If you're here in opposition to item nine, is there someone here? Okay. Yeah, what we'd be looking to do is continue this to next month's hearing if it's not too great of a, in consideration for you. We would plan to discuss this next month, as always, a fourth Wednesday of each month. You can come back next month. Or you could submit your comments in writing if you don't want to come back to the hearing, but I'd leave that up to you. Okay? All right. Okay, would there be a motion to grant the continuance?
I'll move.
Motion by Cindy, second by Marlaus. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries six to zero. So, we'll cross item nine off, and we'll revisit that next month toward the front of the agenda. Okay, do we have any items on the current Consent Agenda, Bert, that need to be moved to the regular hearing?
Yeah, item number three, the proposed garage at 4117 East 30th Street, does not agree to all of the conditions recommended by staff, so that will have to be discussed briefly.
Okay.
And then item number five is the request at 121 Zwart Road, the exception to allow constructions of a single-family house. We have received a card against it, and I also took a phone call this morning from somebody who said they were going to be here to speak against number five as well, so we'll have to discuss that one.
Okay, all right. And, so, we'll move item three and five to our regular portion to hear full testimony on those. Are there any items that staff is recommending moving to the Consent Agenda?
Yeah, just one today, and that's item number 12, the appeals at 2331 University Avenue. Request to renovate and redo the parking for the building at 2331 University.
Okay. Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak against item number 12? Any concerns with 2331 University? Okay, seeing none, would there be a motion to move item 12 to the Consent Agenda?
I'll move.
I'll give that to Marlaus, and a second to Lynn. All those in favor of moving 12 to Consent, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Okay, so what I'm going to do here, although we've got, always, staff lays out a good agenda, it seems to somehow have some variety by the time we get to the hearing day, so I'm going to read through the items that we're going to consider for approval on the Consent Agenda. And if there's anybody that would be here in opposition to any one of these items I'm going to read off, please raise your hand when I read that number. Item one is an exception request at 4506 Hickman Road. Anyone here in opposition to item one? Seeing none. Item two is an exception request at 1601 Cassidy Drive. Anyone here in opposition for item two? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Item four is a variance request near 1401 Fremont Street. Anyone here in opposition to that? Okay, seeing no hands. Item six is a special permit request for 900 Grand Avenue. Any opposition for item six? Seeing none, then our final item that we'd be moving to Consent, or we've moved to Consent, item 12, a variance and exception at 2331 University. All right, seeing no concerns, would there be a motion from someone on the Board to grant approvals for the exceptions, variances, special permits, and other appeals as presented in items one, two, four, six, and 12?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Marlaus. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries six to zero. So if you were here for items one, two, four, six, or 12, they have been approved in accordance with the enumerated staff conditions that go with that approval, and those are listed in your packet. So we'll have your decision and order with those approvals out to you by middle of next week. So again, if you're here for items one, two, four, six, or 12, those have been approved, and we thank you for coming down today. Okay, so, we'll have a few people probably shuffle out on that, and then we'll transition here to the regular portion of our hearing agenda. And it looks like our first item up for bid today then will be an exception request. That's item number three, an exception request at 4117 East 30th Street. And it looks like Catherine's going to kick us off with presentation today.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Catherine Dostart, planner for the city of Des Moines. The property that we'll be looking at is located on East 30th, just north of East Shawnee. Nice-sized lot. The appellant is looking to take down the existing garage, which they've already done, or, excuse me, it would be this building, and build a new garage, and then move the carport that you can see here behind the new garage. And the new garage would be relatively close to the same dimensions and located approximately in the same place as you can see here, so. The appellant has provided us with an example of what the proposed new garage would look like, and here's just a few site photos of the area. You can see that the existing garage is already down, the carport's currently in its existing location. Just another side view. You see that they have plenty of space. Staff is supportive of this request, however, we have put on the standard conditions that include horizontal lap siding on the proposed garage and asphalt shingles, and as you can tell a little bit from the example that they provided, they're looking to do something a little bit different, so that is what they, the condition as we're aware, that they're not agreeing with. So, if there are any questions that I can attempt to answer for you?
Questions for Catherine?
Oh, excuse me, forgot the consent map.
Sure, okay. Catherine, I would have a brief question, so the, it's a little bit of a flip-flop here. We want to put the existing carport behind the new garage, the new garage will go where the carport was, right?
I believe that the...
Pretty close.
I think actually the proposed garage will be located about in the same area as where the existing garage was. You'll see there's a little bit of space here where I believe this is where the carport has been, so they're actually moving things...
We just see the carport now because the old garage is gone.
Yes.
Okay. Is the, was the existing carport built with proper permits or in compliance with the city code at the time it was constructed? Do you guys know that?
At the time that it was constructed, I don't think that we have any violations, so I would assume that that would be the case, and then, and I did forget to mention that the only other request we have besides the horizontal lap siding and the asphalt shingles is that they make sure that the carport once moved behind the new garage would be not visible from East 30th.
And its reinstallation would need to meet building requirements for anchoring of the carport, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Catherine?
So, this was on the Consent Agenda. What item are they, they doing different?
As we understand it, specifically just that they would like to do something that's more in line with the example they provided, so it would have more of the metal siding versus the horizontal lap siding.
So, what's the siding?
It looks like it might also be the, doing a metal roof versus asphalt shingles, but I'll let the appellant clarify that detail.
All right. Any other questions for Catherine? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so the way the hearing works, the applicant now can step up. They can have up to ten minutes to present their reasoning for the request for their appeal. Is the applicant here? All right, come on up. Good afternoon and welcome. We just need your name and address, and then you've got the floor.
Yeah, Kurt Farrell, 4117 East 30th Street. I'm the owner. And yes, the old garage has fallen down, so I wanted to take it down and put up a metal Proline building, so it's going to be a nice building, clay in color with a white roof. My carport is white. It will go behind the garage, but up close to it, I'm going to replace all the concrete, the new slab, it will be in approximately the same area. I'm going to have to move over a little bit to allow for your five-foot variance, but this could be about a $45,000, $50,000 project, and I went down to the permit center a couple times to talk to them beforehand and let them know, I want to do a metal building. Nothing was ever said, no, you cannot do it. I've already given Proline $6,200, and I mean, it's going to be a nice, very nice building. And so I'm just asking that I, you know, can go ahead and do this metal building. As I've went around the neighborhood today, I've found about thirteen other properties just from East 29th to Colfax and Douglas to Aurora, they all have, they have metal buildings, not all of them match, and I'm getting financing with Neighborhood Finance, and part of the deal I made with them was my house needs to closely match this new garage, and I have no problem with that because it needs to be painted anyway. So, I've already got quotes from Surtapro, about $1,300 to do the paint job on the house, so I'm looking to really make a big improvement here on this property.
So what color will the outside, will we be painting the outside, and what color will the roof be?
The sides will be clay, and the roof is a vintage white. The gutters and downspouts will be white. The corner trim is going to be clay to match the siding because that's the way my house is painted.
And you're painting the house gray?
No, the house is going to be, I haven't decided yet, kind of a brownish or tan, maybe even a gray, but right now it's green, and it's an ugly green, and I just...
So the clay color would be like a tan, grayish, tan color?
Yes, I have a sample if you want to see it there.
You can just lay it right on top of your picture.
But they're going to be kind of coordinating, so it's not going to be like a green and a white?
No, it's, it's going to be...
Complimentary.
Yes, it is definitely going to be complimentary.
Yeah.
Over there.
We usually don't get into color wheels here, but just to help us since that's, since that's black and white, this helps a little bit.
I'm having people help me with the color wheel, too, so...
Okay, all right. So what you got circled, clay would be the siding color?
Yeah.
And then the white would be the roofing color?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And is the siding then horizontal on it, so does it look like...
No, um...
Or is it up and down? I'm just trying to see if it matches kind of the house at all.
Well, here's another picture more along that. It's going to be more of a vertical, and that's what these other dozen properties I've looked at in that area, they all have this vertical siding on them, on these metal buildings.
Kurt, are you looking to have any windows in the building to help kind of break up the side and the facade and how it looks?
Yep, there's going to be three windows, one service door, and then the garage door will be in the front, and will be, there's my dimensions right there. So, window on each side, the overhead door here, service door, window, window, window.
All right.
Proline is a real good company, too. That's why I hired them, because they, I've delivered concrete to them for years, they do a very professional job at this.
Okay. Any other questions for Kurt? All right, anything else you want to add? You good for now?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, well, thank you for your information.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? And Bert, I would have one just as a clarification. Yeah, it can be easy to see other metal roofs, metal siding in a neighborhood, but the case we've got here, since he's asking to build a building larger than what the ordinance would allow, this often is a little bit of what I call quid pro quo. If you want something, then the city would want something to help minimize and blend the look, is that correct?
Right, yeah, the intent is just so, since it is larger than, it's more of a commercial size.
Right.
We, this, I guess the record, the conditions intended to keep the building of a residential character rather than a commercial grade.
But if he built it to be the, what, thousand square feet or less that would fit within the normal requirements?
Right.
He, he, he could have his vertical, whatever colored siding he'd like.
Right, yeah, say he would remove the carport, then he would be under a thousand square feet of accessory structures on the property, and then he could build it with whatever he wanted.
Okay. Are you aware of that, Kurt? You can nod yes or no. I take it you want to keep your carport?
I would like to. I was originally going to go to wash the garage and give her the carport, because I just didn't understand, I was down there a thousand foot, it was all my building.
The limit.
I thought, I was going to do a 30 by 40 and keep the carport, and now you're over a thousand, so that's why I wanted a smaller garage and keep the carport.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Bert, much appreciated. Okay, we'll go ahead then and close the public portion and go to Board deliberation.
Now, I'm looking at the size of the lot, and I mean, it's, it's, it's 39,000 square feet, which is almost an acre, it's just, you know, like nine tenths of an acre, and I think there's a little more leeway when you have those large lots, as opposed to being, you know, more of a smaller lot where things are really kind of close together.
Mm-hmm.
That's just been my experience as I've seen things going around.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I like the idea of the carport being placed behind the garage, it kind of, not that they're eyesores, but...
Right.
It visually would look better from the street, and I agree with Lynn, I mean, he's got a nice piece of property there, he's got plenty of room.
And perhaps in this case, the size of the garage isn't maybe as, quite as large as we've seen with some others recently, under some similar circumstances, so I'd be inclined to blend in a little bit better, even as is.
Right, and the fact that he's putting a quality building in, I think it's, it's going to look good, and he's going to change the color of his house to match, so I think overall the project's going to look real nice when he's done.
And we are at the exception level, by the way, so the variance level, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, I'll make a motion to approve amending item number two to correspond with his building materials, which would be vertical lap siding and metal roofing.
As, as generally presented by the applicant, how would that be?
Perfect.
All right, all right.
Second.
I'm going to give that to Dave since he...
Oh, sure.
He jumped on it. Okay, so motion by John, second by Dave, to approve the requested exception, and we're going to scratch item two, and it will generally need to be constructed as shown and presented by the applicant. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, one. Okay, motion carries five to one. Okay, Kurt, you've got your building, you've got a nice-looking house there and a nice property to begin with, I'm sure it'll look good, so, thank you. We'll have to get the decision and order finalized, which will be about Tuesday, Wednesday, but you could call the staff and see, as soon as it's ready, they'll try to get it down there for you.
Remember, Monday's a holiday.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we've got a holiday, but we work good together to get these signed as quick as we can for you. All right, you bet, thanks for coming down. Okay, that'll bring us then, based on our change-up on the schedule, we took item five off the Consent Agenda, so we're going to hear an exception request at 121 Zwart Road.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, the appeals for item five would allow for construction of a single-family dwelling on an existing lot at 121 Zwart Road. The property is unique in that it has frontage on Zwart Road to the north and Terrace Road to the south, and the terrain is such that Zwart Road is significantly higher in grade than Terrace Road. The applicant is proposing to build a house with this footprint. It meets the front yard setback requirements from both Terrace Road and from Zwart Road, and it also meets the minimum required side yard setbacks, so the only appeals we're looking at are the lot width requirement, the lot area requirement, and then a few exceptions for the design of the house itself. So here's the house that they're proposing. You can see, this is the south elevation along Terrace Road. It would appear to be four stories, or I guess three stories plus this fourth mezzanine level, which is why it needs to accept, two exceptions to the height, one to have one story over the allowed three stories, and then the other for seven feet over the allowed 35 feet of height. But I would point out that from Zwart Road, it would appear to just be two stories, but...
Mm-hmm.
And then the other two appeals that they need are, one, to have a flat roof, and then, two, to not have an overhang around the entire perimeter of the house, since the city's single-family design guidelines require a roof pitch of at least 312 and an overhang around the entire perimeter. If the property looks familiar, it's because it's been before the sport a couple of times in the past, back in 2012 and in 2013, there was a different owner that was wanting to build a house. For whatever reason, they never did build the house that was approved at that time. I would point out that the previous appeals required exceptions to side yard setbacks, but this house design does not need those. Here are some photos, this is from Zwart Road, looking to the south. You can see it is heavily wooded right now. Then this is from Terrace Road to the south, looking up the hill. Just a couple of street views, so here's the view from Terrace Road. I believe the neighbor that's in objection has this house right here, and they're concerned with the four-story view, or the four-story house blocking the views from their property. So here's the consent map, and then here's the card that we had received in opposition. As for the staff recommendation, all of the appeals that are being requested are exceptions, meaning that they only have to demonstrate practical difficulties. We do believe that the unique terrain of this property and the existing dimensions of the property do pose those practical difficulties, so we have recommended approval of the appeals as requested, the subject's to three conditions. One, that they comply with the building code. Two, that the building, or the house has a design and building materials as identified in the submitted elevations. And then, three, that any tree removal for the single-family dwelling shall provide mitigation plantings in accordance with the schedule generally applied to the development of subdivisions. They would just be, they would need to count how many trees over, I believe, six inches in caliper are being removed, and then they'd have to provide that number of new trees to offset those being removed.
Okay.
Any questions?
What kind of houses, this is a very contemporary-looking house, is this a neighborhood where there's a lot of different styles, or is everything pretty much traditional, and this is, do you have any idea?
No, it's, it's a unique neighborhood. You can see that the house just across the street has a flat roof.
Okay.
You can see the house immediately to the west does have a sloped roof, but it's not a very large roof, or not a very steep roof, but...
Okay, so unique home would not be like out of place?
Right.
Okay.
And Bert, I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this question, I'm going to throw out you, but under the new zoning ordinance, which we may adopt here in the near term, when we look at housing design in a typical neighborhood of this type, will the city still have a requirement to have a sloped roof normally and some kind of parapet?
It depends on the zoning district. There's going to be five types of residential neighborhood districts, and the N1s and N2s would allow for more contemporary designs, where the N3, N4, and N5s, which are the more traditional neighborhoods, those would continue to require sloped roofs.
If you were, with your wisdom or as a betting person, would you say this is an N1, N2 for future zoning?
I believe... I believe the, most of the south of Grand areas are N one and N two.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for Bert? Okay, all right, so the applicant or the applicant's representative, you've got the floor. Good afternoon, welcome. We just need your name, address, and tell us about your project.
Thank you, good afternoon, um, I'm Jeff Blosser, owner. Home address right now is 301 East Court, Unit 205 in Des Moines. Um, I've been looking at the property for a couple of years. Um, I'm an architect, and so, um, I've understood some of other homes that have been designed for the property, and the property's unique, um, it's kind of irregular sort of shape. Um, so it kind of lends itself to be kind of a small house that needs to be fitted on the property. Um, geotechnical soil reports suggest the house be slid down, um, down, further down towards Terrace. The plan is to have, um, driveways, um, the plan is to have drive access off, off Terrace, and then pedestrian access would be off, um, off Zwart. Um, given this, the slope is like thirty-some feet of slope from Zwart to Terrace, and to try to keep, um, I think the neighborhood's very beautiful, and I want to keep the natural surroundings of the, of the lot and try to keep as natural as possible, so I don't want to have a large footprint of a house. So, I made the house small and tall. Um, I didn't want to have a patio area, have to do a lot of grading to, to compromise the site, to have patio, outdoor patios, and so, I'm looking at doing a rooftop deck that, um, would kind of suggest that you couldn't do a flat, or couldn't have a pitched roof on it. And that is why this, the house goes up presumably four stories, because the stair on, on the outside, uh, the stair component of the house, um, goes up to what could be seen as a fourth floor to the, um, uh, to the roof deck. I was very, trying to be very mindful to sit within, well within the, the, the setback requirements that the city has suggested, so, um, and there is precedence, as mentioned before, in the neighborhood of some other unique homes that have flat roofs on it. Um, my intent is that this is a nice addition to the neighborhood, um, just, uh, I love the lot, I love that neighborhood, I'm just trying to be mindful and set something that sets artful in that location.
So, there is already an owner for this house, it's not a speculative house?
This is my own personal home.
It's going to be your house, okay, cool.
Yes, this is my own personal home, so, um, I, I know, like I mentioned, the geotechnical engineers suggested the house be slid down, further down to Terrace, um, versus up on Zwart. Um, when you stack it from Terrace side, as mentioned before, you're only going to see probably two, two stories. Um, so this, this rendering right here is an image of what you'd see from the Zwart side, um, basically, uh, two-story home, perhaps even a little bit smaller than that. So, um, I don't feel it's being obtrusive to the, to the neighborhood. Um, I'm hoping it's being, um, it's well-received.
Okay. Jeff, uh, a lot of times we get folks that want to have a lot of elbow room and push those side yard setbacks very close to the neighbors. Now, did I hear you say you're trying to avoid that by, by building a, if you will, a narrower house so that you're trying to preserve as much of that side yard as possible? Is that correct?
That's correct. On the west side, there's like twenty-some feet that's on the west side from the property line. Um, and then the, then the setback at the smallest point has been city guidelines. Um, and given the irregular shape of the lot, that smallest point here is ten feet, but then it widens out as it goes through the back of the lot.
Yeah. And then will that allow you to hopefully maybe retain a few trees, or certainly then backfill more once your construction's done?
Yeah, my, my plan is like to keep the lot as natural as possible, and so I want to maintain as many of the trees as possible.
Okay.
So, um, the position of the, there are some, there are some larger trees that will probably have to come out, um, right in the middle of the house, by trying to position it, being mindful of the setbacks as well as existing trees in the, on the lot.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your comments. Okay, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, do we have anybody here to, here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, all right, come on up. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, I'm Julie Yenkey, I live in the property that was right next door, the brown house you all saw, at 115 Zwart Road. My objection is not to have a neighbor and keep an empty lot. When we moved into this house nine years ago, we realized that there was always the potential that someone would move in, so that's not really what it is about for us. Um, I think what it is about is, we were aware of the zoning requirements that are set forth by the city, so in, in your mind, you knew you were protected in some way. You had a vision of what could be built there someday, when we purchased the property. So, we went into it knowing that that potential could happen. Really, my concerns are related to, uh, I mean, the lot is small. We have a fair, the similar lot size, and our house is three stories. And so, it's built within the parameters of the neighborhood. So, really, my concerns are based on the four-story piece of the appeals, and I say that because that would, in my mind, warrant a smaller house. So, if you have a smaller property line, you would think you would be building a smaller house, which he indicated that he is, because he's not en- entrenching on our property. But our house goes three stories, you can easily build a beautiful home that goes three stories. I would like a bigger house myself, um, but you kind of know, when you purchase a house in our neighborhood, that that's kind of what you're going to get. Uh, the second is aesthetics. I think it was Ms. Mrs. Carson asked the question about, is this a similar look or feel of the neighborhood? And there is a house directly across the street from my, from mine, um, that has a flat roof. I can say with ninety percent certainty, it's really the only house in the neighborhood, there might be potentially one others, that has that look. So, it's definitely not the theme of the neighborhood, and I'm not saying I'm not open to change, I'm just clarifying, that many of the homes are modest. You will find a five hundred thousand dollar house, and three houses down from where this is built is an eighty thousand dollar house. So, I do know that this can bring value to my home, so I'm not being naive. This brings in property taxes and things like that. But I do want to say that a four-story property, that's where, that's going to be lined up next to me. So, many of our views from our home faces that way. And so, of course, there was potential for that to go away anyway, but that much higher means I'm looking at a building instead of the blue sky, when I'm at the top floor of my own home. So, what you would like is to look out and see your neighbor's roof when you look out from your top floor of your home. So, that's really kind of the main feels that I had about the objections. And just knowing in this neighborhood, you're going to have a smaller place, and to can, to really think about the four-story is kind of my biggest problem with the proposal, so.
Questions for Julie? Okay, all right, Julie, thank you for coming down and sharing your comments with us, very much appreciated. Anybody else here to speak in opposition today? Come on down.
I'm David Hoppert. Linda and I live next door east. We built our home there in nineteen eighty-two. I'm here to talk about an entirely different subject, the stability of the lot. Jeff, first, I want to say, thank you, you're a class act. Jeff sent us a letter explaining what he wanted to do, and, and he chose not to encroach upon our setbacks. He true, chose not to spread out, but go up. I got to tell you a little about his lot and our lot. A glacier about a football field and a half tall came down from the north. I'm not telling you the big story. And it stopped on Forest, which is one block north of Zwart. Can you believe that? And all of the rubble that a glacier pushes in front of it, then as it melted over centuries, just kind of fell down. So, what, and then got covered in centuries later by dirt and clay. It, it is very unstable. Zwart Road, Road itself fell into Jeff's lot back in the fifties or sixties. You can check it with your engineer. And they had to, city had to come out and put in these real, beat down, these real strong corrugated steel chunks this li, this wide, to shore it up, and then built the street again. Our house has slid eighteen inches since we've been there. I just think it, it is so unstable for anyone to put any weight on that property. And if you were going to build it, Jeff, on that property, I would think you would, and I'm not an architect, as you know, I would think you would put it up higher. Uh, we're down lower, and, uh, we're sliding. It's called a grease plane, where red clay and gray clay meet, and you just slide ever so slowly. So, that's my only point. Uh, one of the persons on this same board, when we were here six years ago, when Tony Lemo wanted to build on that plot and decided not to, I think because he felt it was unbuildable. One of the people on your groups spoke to you, uh, just not to us, and he said, I think the city ought to list this plot as unbuildable. Well, they got voted down. Uh, Tony got his permit, but he didn't build. And I don't, I'm not sure, how would I know? I don't know, I don't think Jeff ever knew anything about the, the instability, and he should have, should have been told by someone. That's my only concern. He could, the house could slide our way, which mine has done, has slid down partially and east partially. Or when his heavy equipment is in there digging out for it, all of that motion and rumbling could cause our house to move again. I paid twenty thousand dollars to try to stabilize it about five years ago. It's got cracks throughout the ceilings. I hope it works. I, I, you're a good man, I hope you can figure out something. Thank you, do you have questions?
I'd just like to say, David, I appreciate your description of what I would call the Des Moines Loeb, from about a hundred and forty thousand years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, last glacial period.
You read about it, too? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate you coming down. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, Jeff, you've got the option, since there were two folks that spoke against this, if you have any other closing remarks you would like to add, or, um, perhaps you have some information you'd like to share based on their concerns.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments. Um, I do know about the soils. Uh, Alender Busky has done a soils report on the property, and they've done soil borings. And so, it is unstable, as was mentioned, in some areas. And that's, they're suggesting, based off their information, they're suggesting where the house needs to sit. And so, they're suggesting the house comes down closer to Terrace. That way, it's closer to more stable ground, so the foundations will be able to get, be at a certain depth that could get stable rock, basically. Regarding the, the, um, the comment on the four stories, I, it, by definition, it goes up four stories, but it's only a portion of the house, it's just the stair itself, it's not anything, it's not, the whole entire house isn't built out over, over the entire, um, footprint of the house. And so, it's a portion of the house, it does go up four stories, um, uh, and, um, I guess I'm just trying to make the, I'm trying to be as minimal as possible I can on that lot to keep the natural integrity, and, um, that was my design solution I came up with on this one.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Um, the area where the stairwell is, and the amount of space that's going to take up at the top of it, do you think that's any different than what a normal pitched roof would be? How much higher do you think it is?
For height.
In height, you know, because, otherwise, you have three stories and your roof is going to have a certain amount of room.
So, the-
You're not doing the roof, you're doing the stairway, so how, how much difference do you think?
So, right now, at the very top of the parapet of the stair component of the house is forty-two feet from Terrace, on the, on the Terrace roadside. And, um, by zoning definition, we need to, you can't be any higher than, I believe, thirty-five feet. And so, if I went with a pitched roof, I'd have to be up even higher than that.
But if you went three stories and a pitched roof?
If I went, if I went, yeah, if I didn't take it all the way, three stories, um, it'd probably-
But you'd be allowed by right to have three stories to begin with.
But it'd be about the same, is what I'm saying. So, it's, because it's called a four-story, because this, I'm just-
Sure.
Whatever.
I was trying to find a way to get a means to up to the roof as well, it's happening.
Got you.
I've got my answer.
So, it's actually no taller than a three-story house with a pitched roof?
I think the, the way I read the code, I think there's a limitation, like thirty-five feet. And I'm, I'm interpreting that to be at the, that very ridge point of a roof. That's my interpretation.
It's not a pitched roof.
It's not?
It's an averaging of a pitched roof.
Is it? Okay.
The bridge could be taller than thirty-five.
Okay.
So, we're, we're not far off?
Yeah, we're talking about maybe seventeen.
Pitched roof on a three-story house?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I was trying to think, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Jeff. Any further questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. And I would just kind of like to remind everyone, us and the audience, since we aren't the building permitting department, things about soil stability and required footings and foundations and thicknesses and foot pressure rates of new construction, that's what are reviewed when plans and specs are reviewed by permit and development. So, um, it'd be difficult for us to try to become experts or comment on those kind of things. But nonetheless, I think the points are something that anybody's lived in the neighborhood would tell someone, and I know that Jeff is aware of that.
I, I am for this, um, it's a very unusual sized lot, and for him to keep the setbacks, front and backyard, I mean, if he moves the house forward, they wouldn't have to come back against setbacks because he has two front yards. And the fact that, as, I was trying to get, instead of using up some of the extra wood area by putting a patio, he's going to the roof area, and it's really going to be maybe five to seven feet different than if you had a whole roof, and it's going to be a small portion. And yeah, there's not a lot of super contemporary homes like that, but this kind of area lends its way to that as houses come and go. The houses, um, you know, is, as they showed, the people that were up there, isn't your traditional Des Moines two-story type house, and that's why I was kind of getting for unique character, is you don't go, expect to see every third house is the same. So, I, I am for this, I think it makes a lot of sense, with the architect building it for himself, you know, he's going to take extra care, it's kind of like a builder building his own house, you know, it's, um, no shortcuts are taken. Those are my thoughts.
Any other thoughts? Okay, will there be a motion one way or the other?
I, I move that we allowed him to have the house as it's set because he was agreeable to all the things we had to talk about the other people. So, I think he's done a lot of thought, and I think it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
A second.
All right, so you've moved staff recommendation?
Yes.
Uh, by Lynn, uh, second by Dave, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six zero. Jeff, I can tell already, you have some very, very nice neighbors on both sides, and you better be inviting them to your open house. Okay, all right. All right, thank you all for coming in today. All right, that'll bring us now to, back to our regular agenda. And we would start then, I believe, with item seven, a variance request at 221 Park Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this property is, uh, just on the west side of the river downtown. This is Second Avenue, this is Wells Fargo Arena, Hy-Vee Hall, Third Street coming southbound, and Park Street on the south edge here. If you're looking at the subject building, um, you can see an existing unit that's on the property. And then this is kind of pulling back from the intersection of Park Street and Third Street, looking to the northeast at the building. So, you get a little bit of a sense of the visibility of what they're, uh, proposing. They're really cer, the applicant is trying to replace a mechanical unit on the roof, but doesn't want to screen it. They indicated it's very similar in its style and shape and shape- They indicated it's very similar in its style and shape and size to the unit that's already there that isn't screened. These are pictures of the existing unit from the rooftop perspective that the applicant provided. In order to not provide the screening, the board would have to grant a variance. So the variance would suggest that they have to meet the criteria for unnecessary hardship, which includes no other reasonable use without... if you didn't, if you didn't give this relief, basically. What triggers this is the replacement of the unit. If they were just repairing the unit or something of that nature, we would not require that existing unit to be screened with the repair of the unit. But they're actually totally changing out with a new unit. And under the way the code is interpreted by the zoning officer, it's considered an alteration or enlargement, basically, in the non-conforming provisions of the code. So it does then, therefore, based on putting that investment in, it has to be screened from street, adjoining street-level views and from any residential, we aren't dealing with any residential zoned properties in this immediate area, so it's really just the street views in this case. Right now, the code's a little, not as specific as the way the proposed code will be, which will definitely require all units to be screened, the height of the unit. So on 360 degrees, so that's going to be a big change coming up. But right now, they're only obligated to screen from the street level views or place the unit and such that the building would obscure it from street-level view. So they have some alternatives as to how to achieve that, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make.
Questions for Eric?
So staff is recommending denial of the variance.
What would be required for views? I mean, can you just, what, a chain-link fence? Or what would you expect them to put around this unit?
Well, the chain-link fence wouldn't work because it's over 75% open. We'd require something opaque, architectural. It'd have to be more than 75% opaque.
So it'd be like a fence or some other kind of structure built around this structure?
Screening panel, if you will.
I mean, these are all over the place where they've been done. I mean, it's not like something that isn't done. There's architectural screens that are actually designed for these units in a lot of cases, too. Now, they do have to ensure that they meet snow load and some other things, and they also have to keep clearances for technicians to access the units as well. So there is, they do have to meet some code things from the mechanical code and the building codes to make sure that they're not, you know, the roof system is capable. So there's, it's not just as simple as sticking up a fence, probably, but it's, so there has to be some design put into it, so there's some expense. But there are, there's definitely design systems for that that are there. But they can be as simple as a, you know, a plain screen that would be compatible with the building materials.
What is the rationale for wanting them screened when they're two stories, three stories off the ground?
So...
Not like you're walking by and see it.
So if they were placed more at the center of the roof, and then the building obscures that angle view from the street, then it's not an issue. But when they're right at the edge of the rooftop and they're very visible, that's when the code seeks to have them obscured from...
So looking for aesthetics?
It is an aesthetic thing, yes. So again, when you look back at what the current condition is, you can see, you know, if these parapets were a little taller, they might actually achieve the screening that would be required. In that case, I'm not sure what's going on here. If that's for, you know, for ventilation stacks or something, but there is an example of a housing that's there to screen a bulkhead or something like that. But a lot of times, you'll see units placed far enough back away from the edge that they're not visible from the street. So that's another, and so usually, when that happens, we require them to give us cross-sections of the line of sight from street views so that we can, they can demonstrate that the placement of those units won't be visible from the surrounding street.
So Eric, I'm following what the intent is in the ordinance here. What I often also like to look at is, you know, if I look at the neighborhood and the area, have others also been complying when required? I mean, I see Hy-Vee Hall here in your same picture. I can see their mechanicals. I'm not quite sure if there's maybe a little parapet or a foot wall there, yeah. Unless that's a piping chase, but if that is a little parapet, that's an example of how they've screened their units.
And they actually have like, they have backup generators on their roof with...
But to the best of your knowledge, everybody's been meeting screening during new construction in this area?
Well, yeah. New construction of building, it's not, it's the same requirement. And it's, normally, it's, it's not just as simple as drawing a mechanical permit and having somebody verify that there's not a problem there. Because then, on a new building, they're looking at the entire construction of the building, the site plan. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of views of that from different parts of the permit center. But in this case, there was probably only a mechanical permit, and so...
For this case specifically, right.
Okay?
Maybe I'm outlying here. If we're talking aesthetics, so it doesn't stand out because of our thumb, if it were to be painted a darker color, so it'd like blend in with the top of the roof, rather than being a white thing, is that something possible?
Well, that doesn't meet the requirement. But if that's something the board would give relief and require, that could be a condition of the board's approval.
We did have a case on Merle Hay Road where that's exactly what the board decided to do with a majority vote, was to color, because I think the cabinets can come in, maybe up to three different colors. And so we asked them to pick a color that was compatible. Again, more color charts. But yeah, as Eric says, it doesn't meet the requirement.
Just so curious, how tall does a building have to be before you don't have any screening at all? Like, for example, the principal buildings, they have to have screening on top of their building for things, or to stop at a certain height?
Well, it doesn't, I mean, there's a, you know, if you think of the trigonometry of the situation when the road's, what, at the most, 100 feet wide in the right-of-way width, the adjoining street network? You know, if the building's 100 feet tall, you're probably not, and somebody's then standing
Right, right.
on the street, they're not going to see it.
It's supposed to be a street-level view, not if I take a landscape picture.
Yeah, you're right. That's a good point, because this really doesn't come up a whole lot on much taller buildings. But this is a two-story building. So usually, you know, it becomes an issue on one- and two-story buildings, three sometimes. But, I mean, we also have, one of the reasons in the new code, they're going to the 360-degree, the height of the unit, is because they're also now looking to try to obscure it from, when we have all these tall buildings downtown, there's residents and occupants of those buildings don't want to look and see equipment on tops of other buildings.
Wells Fargo was taller than that, and they still had to screen theirs.
I'm not sure if they had to. I think they, that was part of their design. We'd have to look at it on every instance, I suppose, to really answer that. But some of those buildings are tall enough that if, they don't have to place them very far from the edge to make sure they're not visible from adjoining streets. The problem is, are they visible from a block over? Are they visible from two blocks over? That, we don't, we don't require anything for that right now, so...
This may be irrelevant, but normally, when you replace those kind of units, you know, are they always a similar size? I would think that they would have been condensed, and possibly, they could have moved it so it's not so close.
Yeah, and I don't know if the building, you know, that's something you should ask the applicant, because there's, that may be the only place on the roof that it's structurally capable, or, you know, I don't, they're very heavy, so you can't just place them wherever you want necessarily, but...
I just meant from a size perspective, but...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this may have been, when the building was originally designed, that that was where the roof system was designed to support something of that weight, so... I'll let them speak to that, because I don't know the answer to that.
Eric, I thought I saw one card in support. Is that also your radius map? Do you have a pros or cons? There we go, there we go. Okay, so there was our card of support. Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions for Eric? You good, Eric?
I don't have anything else else to question.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, then. Good afternoon, welcome.
I'm a first-timer, so bear with me.
Take it easy on you one time.
Yeah, please. Although I'm on item eight, too, so you can get me on the next one, right? My name's John Trickle. I'm a State of Iowa licensed professional engineer. I work for ISG. Address 1300 Walnut Street, Suite 101. Item number seven with Master Builders, the building we're talking about is closely linked to item number eight. As you may know, I'm on both of them. And the reasons I'm here are the same. So I'll be alluding to actually item number eight, too.
I must interrupt for a second. That's fine. But legally, we are going to need you to have, to make any comment that you need to make for item eight at the time of that hearing. Thank you.
Yep. I respect that, and I'll just say it twice.
Yeah.
We've had other people have to do that.
And we are talking about time. The issue surrounding the screen has been taking a very long time to work through the city. In the case of Bankers Trust, we started their rooftop replacement in about this time last year. In the case of Master Builders, it was about four months later. And I was already aware of the screening issue. I was not in control of getting Master Builders as item number eight, but... I take a little bit exception to what he said at the very beginning, because I, part of my job is to consult. And when I look at your ordinance, us engineers, we respect ordinances. You know, we're required to read them and advise our customers. But when you read 134-1276A, the first number of words say, it suggests, "No building or structure shall be erected, converted, enlarged, reconstructed, reconstructed or structurally altered," blah, 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 okay? In the case of replacing a rooftop unit, we're literally pulling a piece of equipment off and putting another one of like size on. And that is the case with Master Builders. And so it doesn't say anything about, you know, replacement of equipment like how I heard him say that. So there's kind of a discrepancy. I'm glad that it was suggested that there's some gray area here, because I feel there is. I've tried to navigate this. I've been down to the city several times. I've went through a pre-application process with several individuals. I even came up with no less than two screen designs in the case of Bankers Trust, and both were denied. And so this ordinance doesn't appear to me to be written for existing buildings. I mean, that's the very first thing I want to say. If, I'm kind of hearing that it's going in a direction that it will include existing buildings, but it doesn't appear to be written today for existing buildings. That's my opinion and how I interpret it. In the case of the screen specifically, like I said, I've presented two screen designs by reputable screen manufacturers that are very prevalent all over town and in the metro area. And for lots of reasons, they were both denied. Given, you know, space for access, to get in and out of it. I mean, I've got loads of information of all the reasons why it was no, even though these same screens are mounted all over town. And as far as access goes, there's nothing better for access than to not have a screen and have full access to the piece of equipment. In the case of Master Builders, when you look at the pictures, it's a box, okay? And if you put a screen around it three feet away, what do you get? Another box. So I'm just, I'm confused over many things of this ordinance on what to do. I agree with the comment about painting. There's lots of different ways to paint. You can even match brick if you want to match brick. In the very last case, in regards to Bankers Trust, I was giving...
I would encourage you. I'm going to support Glenn here. Let's not talk about Bankers Trust.
Well, I have to, because it's the same ordinance with the same issue.
And you can talk about that under item eight, sir. You've got 10 minutes to present your case. And when you keep talking about Bankers Trust, you're losing your time to talk about this item.
Thank you.
This is your first time, so I'm trying to help you with your first time. Let's talk about Master Builders of Iowa.
Okay. The previous attempt to get a screen designed through the city, I was asked to give a letter of recommenda, a letter from the equipment manufacturer that it would void the memory, or the warranty, a drawing showing all the equipment service access points, location of voltage and required shut-off, screen layout and dimensions, screening attachment details, location of all screening struts and braces, and a structural analysis, both on the screening mechanism itself and how it relates to sitting in and around the rooftop unit. That's what was asked of me by the city. I gave them every, everything, and it costs a lot of money to do that.
Do you have copies or pictures or drawings to show us of what you gave them?
No, I didn't. It's a stack of stuff this week.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't get answers yes or no on what to do and was advised to actually come through this process. So that's why I'm here. I don't have clear direction what to do. I've asked for painting. I've asked for direction, which is means and methods, which the ordinance doesn't provide.
You could suggest something. Do you have any proposed screening that might meet the requirements of the city?
I've proposed twice.
And if we could...
Can I clarify, was that for Bankers Trust or was that for Master Builders?
It's for Bankers Trust.
Only. Okay. I just want to clarify for the record.
Keep in mind, you know, time's valuable, and I'm not going to spend all my time and charge a client to do a duplicate action. So it didn't make sense for me to do all of this twice.
No, that's completely fine. I just want to make sure I know which item you're talking about. Thank you.
So that's, those are my comments. I'd like to use these pictures.
Please do. Yep, he's got it.
Okay, there's a picture of the, that's actually of the old unit. The new unit is nice and shiny and sparkly, new paint.
Smarles asked, is it smaller than this one?
It is identical in size.
Okay.
And what color would it be, since it's shiny, new paint?
It's kind of a tan color.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is more of a green. It more, it actually matches the building better than the one that was taken off.
Do we have a picture of that?
I do not have a picture of the new unit.
Has the new unit been installed already, then?
It is installed. It is working. The inspection of it has already taken place.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you want to add? You good for now?
I just need clear direction.
Well, we'll work on it.
Other than...
John?
Is there any hardship you have of not wanting to do this other than just not wanting to do the screening? That, I mean, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I appreciate that question. The screen takes quite a bit of time to think about and to design, so for a guy like me, that could add up to $3,000 to $5,000 of fees. The screen itself, especially for this particular unit, is probably going to run $30,000. And in the case of being denied two screen designs, the only other choice is to actually puncture the roof in two dozen locations with posts, which is not good for any roof at any time, and probably run the cost up to $40,000, $50,000. and probably run the cost up to forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. So there's, there's only a couple methods to screen.
All right. Well, for the moment, you can go ahead and sit down, we'll see if we've got anybody else who wishes to speak in support or in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You bet. All right, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition of the applicant? Any further questions for staff? I've got one, Eric. The applicant had mentioned that the regulations were kind of vague, but you cited section 134-1276-T2 that says all rooftop mechanical units shall be screened from streets. Correct?
Right, and presumably any new placed ones would follow that requirement.
So with what I would call a non-conforming use, like it was pre-existing, built under an old ordinance that didn't require screening, what we call grandfathering, if now with a new ordinance in place, we now want to take out an old thing or build a new one, then the new rules apply, correct?
Correct, and I think the appellant was pointing out that in the other section of the code, where they, you know, where the non-conforming provision speaks to the enlargement or alteration, this is a significant, I mean, this building wouldn't function without this unit. It's not a building in itself, or it's not a structural element of the building itself, but our zoning officers interpreted that this is a component, an essential component of the building.
Of course.
And this is a full replacement of that, it's not a repair, it's not a, you know, coming in and changing out a component of it or something, you know, this is the complete replacement, and in that, at that time, then it needs to meet the standard, which is in that, in that section T that you just mentioned.
Are the design specifications pretty cut and dried?
In terms of the mechanical code?
No, on the screening requirement. It sounds like he brought two designs in.
It's actually very flexible in the way it's written now, because it just says it can't be visible from street level view.
I'm talking about the screening. He brought two designs for screens, and they were both rejected.
Yeah, that would be based on the mechanical code requirement, so if you need to have more, you know, information on that, I would think you'd want to bring in Cody Christensen or somebody.
I was just wondering if it's pretty clear what the screening requirement is as far as the structural stability of it.
Yeah, I can't speak to what it failed on.
And are we given guidance for that? Because they know what they're getting into when they put these on there.
Most of, yeah, I would say, in most cases, there's an understanding of that.
Pretty straightforward.
The, in terms of how it failed, might have been related more to the code of the mechanical code, not giving enough clearance, or and then in order to provide the screen, that he pointed out, you know, he might have to have a larger perimeter, which would require more structural elements, that type of thing.
Yeah, I was just wondering how clear the requirement is for people to
But the mechanical code probably doesn't speak to the requirement. It's, they're designed to meet the zoning requirement. Whether that conflicts with elements of the mechanical code is probably what came into play when he said there was a couple of fails.
And Eric, just to clarify, the applicant, the repellent stated that he didn't present those alternate screens for this location, and so we don't know why they failed, city requirements, but we also don't know whether they would or would not have failed at this location.
Correct, I think, yeah, I think he indicated he didn't want to spend the cost of going through that iteration.
Right. Are you aware of other buildings that have had to do the same thing? They've had to replace an existing unit and provide a screen?
It's, yeah, so you're only seeing an appeal of one of these. You know, for everything like this, there's many that just comply. Certainly, there's been the, in the past, there's been units that didn't comply with our current standard, so there's definitely examples out there throughout the city where they don't comply.
Okay, the picture you have, he said the unit's been up and running for a while. Have you been by there recently to see how the new unit looks?
This picture was last week, so
So that's, is that the new unit, then?
I'm going to ask that
He can nod.
That's the new unit up there?
Just to confirm, he's confirming that, yes, that is the case.
And I couldn't really tell from that distance whether it was any different than this one that they provided pictures of, which clearly is not a new unit when you get that close.
You can still see it, I don't want you to see it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and that, so this is the other
Okay, all right. Any other clarification needed from Eric? All right, thank you for answering that question on the code reference. Okay. We'll go ahead then and close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
It sounds like there is no clear answer. I don't, I mean, the only thing, I would think is maybe going a little bit darker gray to camouflage more and with the brick on the building, but there seems to be no clear answer. People have been going around and around and
It doesn't sound, I'm not, I'm going to disagree with that. Because he hasn't even submitted a design for this. And there are people all over town that are putting these same units on buildings, replacing their existing unit, whether it's this or not, that are putting screens up. Because we haven't seen any other people. Now, coincidentally, we have two today, and it's with the same person. So I think he's created this a little bit himself, when he hasn't even submitted a design for this building, and it's clear that we can see it, and it's clear that it's in violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, we've had some other cases before, and of course, each case has its own merits, one way or the other, but we've had cases where people have erected screening secondarily after we've directed that. There's different types of screening that can be done. Certainly has to meet certain requirements for wind loading and ability to withstand weather, but I've seen a variety of ways people have done that, and we've required that. We've required it on convenience stores, as an example, to screen their refrigeration units on top of their roofs. You know, there's times and places where it has been done, when it's been in violation, and quite often, it's done during new construction, and people just comply with it from square one. And we never see them.
Didn't give any broad example of any hardship or reasonings why for this location, other than something with submitting plans for another location, so it's hard to go by to accept what he's wanting to do, in my opinion.
Okay, well, would there be a motion one way or the other? Okay, so, just clarification on discussion here, so if there's no other discussion, is there a motion, one way or the other?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by John, a second by Marlist, move staff recommendation for denial of the variance request for the rooftop screening. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Okay, opposed, just do it, okay, none, okay, that motion carries six zero. Okay, John, you can come talk to us again hereafter staff. So Eric, can you, I trust item eight is you, too? Okay, so, item eight is a variance request at 3905 Merle Hay Road, referenced as Bankers Trust Company.
Okay, item, Mr. Chair members of the board. Item eight is a request to appeal the same provision of the code for a different location at 3905 Merle Hay Road, which is directly east of the Merle Hay Mall. This is Applebee's, I believe. If you're just north of Douglas, about a half a block between Madison and Douglas Avenue. This is a slightly different request, in the sense of this came about as a, more of a comprehensive project for the, for the property, the bank, which involved maybe more structural aspect to the rooftop. I'm not sure if that's the design they landed on it with this proposal, and I'll let them speak to that, but initially, there was a very significant unit and structural alteration that was related to that that actually was a significant percentage of the value of the building in terms of its cost. So it actually also triggered a site plan requirement, just by that nature of it. And that sometimes happens when we're dealing with smaller sized buildings. That kicks in a site plan compliance or something of that nature, but in this case, they did go through, get their site plan approved, I believe they were issued their permit, and that included with the requirement, of course, to provide the screening, and so it's been installed. So I think they've been working with our permit staff to get something that can be approved under that provision, and also meet the mechanical code and not fail on the final inspection of the unit. I'll show you some photos. So looking from the west towards the building, you can see the unit, it's a darker color. There's a lot more trees surrounding this property, so the, the character and some of the condition is slightly different. That's actually the exact same picture. This is more of a pan over the whole site to see the overall building itself. Again, you'll see the unit right here. I apologize, I didn't get any shots from the backside, from the neighbors' side, but there is a lot of mature trees from that direction, too, so the residential side may not be as critical from the views, although I don't have any actual, you know, lines of sight analysis or anything to prove that it wouldn't be visible from the neighbors to the east. So if you look at the, again, if you look at the map, the adjoining property to the east on 57th Street is directly behind it, so you know, the view, it's difficult to tell whether the views are here, there's a lot of trees right there, but we wrote it with the most conservative notification that it could be visible also from the east. Staff is recommending the same recommendation of denial, based on the same finding that we didn't believe there was enough demonstration or adequate demonstration that it met the criteria for granting a variance. So we believe that there's a way to provide the screening and that it wouldn't, by not waiving it, that it wouldn't make it unreasonable use of the property or no use of the property, basically. So we don't believe it met that test.
So Eric, in this case, if I read this correctly, and as you've mentioned this, so this also, the new unit has been installed here?
Yes, and I think that was based on an issuance of a permit that it would comply in some fashion. So I think there was different proposals to do that. I don't believe it's gotten its final sign-off on inspection, though.
Okay, so how does, so a permit gets issued with conditions that someone must meet? And then they go out and they install it, and then they get a final inspection, right?
That's correct, yes.
So the condition should have been known even before the unit was installed?
Yes, and they, and they were aware, you know, even throughout the site planning process, which I think ended up getting narrowed down a little bit, too, to a limited area of the site, because in general, most of it's in compliance, anyway. The, the, so everything was taken out and proceeded as if it was going to comply, and this is their remedy now at this point, after having some difficulty with our permitting development and getting that approved under the mechanical provisions, so
I just don't understand how the mechanical permit would have been issued to allow them to install it without this being clearly noted and saying, this is how it will be screened.
You know, I have to say, I don't know if their mechanical permits, first of all, I believe you can actually do those over the phone.
Okay, right, but the site plan reference, it's got to be screened.
Right, site plan would have notes that say rooftop mechanical units shall be screened.
And that's signed off by their architects or engineers at the time of site plan acceptance, and then they proceed.
Yeah, or whoever the designer is, a licensed mechanical contractor, on the case of the permit for the I believe that the, in this case, we were dealing with a building permit because there was also structural components of the roof system that were tied to it, so it wasn't just a mechanical permit, so I have a copy of it if you need to see it.
Oh, that's okay. I'm glad you got it, though, thank you. Okay, anything else for Eric? All right, okay, John, you can have the floor. Got up to ten minutes, tell us about Bankers Trust.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, I'm a pro at the end of this, right?
You're getting there, you're doing great.
So I'd like to just go back to what the ordinance says. It clearly does not say existing buildings, I just want to reiterate that. It talks about newly erected buildings. And in regards to the structurally altered, what we did was we wanted to utilize the existing curb that was already there. So we lifted the old unit off the curb. The new unit was roughly the same size, just a little smaller by like an inch, newer technology by twenty years. So we added an angle iron about that wide and eight feet long to the curb.
When you say curb, the base or the frame that the old ones had on the roof?
Yeah, you have the roof structural system, and then you have the roof curb, and then the unit sits on the curb. So that is part of that, where we had to make up an inch so the unit would sit there. I, I am not in agreement that it was a major structural anything. I don't agree with that assessment. Going back to what I previously said, it wasn't that we were saying, no, we won't screen it. It's just that I, I have no direction on where to go. The ordinance doesn't dictate how you screen it, it just says you screen it. Doesn't say with posts or beams or by guy wires or by anything, but yet every time we submitted a screen design, it was rejected, even though it's a very common screen design, you know?
You have a picture of that you could show us?
It was in all the documents.
Okay, but you didn't bring anything today to show, this was the screening we proposed that was rejected? Because we might say, we really liked that screening, and we'll let you have it.
They all look the same.
I haven't seen one recently, so it would be helpful.
It's like a fence, you know, it's a fence, just imagine a fence around a box. So this has been going on a very long time, a lot of time goes by between talking and providing this information, so when you, when you did talk about the poll permitting and how we were walking ourselves through this process, I felt that the engineering team in the city were engaged just every other month, trying to resolve it. And I, I, I don't understand why it takes so long to resolve an issue like this, but here we are, a year later. And in the final ask was the list that I previously gave you. They have warranty letters, structural engineering, structural calculations, locations of all struts and braces and even bolts, layouts, dimensions, everything. I mean, those were the requests of the city given to me, and I complied with every one of them, and they even said, you know, they would likely approve it. And then basically gave us no answer, other than, please, you might want to try your luck standing here today. And that's why I'm here. So if you're going to deny it, I guess, I respectfully request that you at least write in the minutes that the city needs to tell us what they want, because we've tried, we don't know what they want. So in regards to what Eric was saying, that little piece of angle iron, it triggered a massive view of this entire facility. I think we're up to $23,000 in design fees, and likely the screen, about $25,000, $25,000, plus the five-foot sidewalk.
plus the five-foot sidewalk for a hundred and some feet, plus two dozen trees and a whole bunch of bushes, all to replace a rooftop unit. So if, we're represented here today as well with Bankers Trust. If they would like to, Sandra Miller, she's the manager of that branch. She's been involved with this project the whole time. If she wants to, I'd like to have her make a statement if she wants to.
With what's left of your 10 minutes, that would be fine if she would like to do that?
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Sandra Miller, and I'm the branch manager at Bankers Trust at 3905 Merle Hay Road. And while I don't know a lot about the process that was involved with the screen, I do know that it does cause somewhat of a financial burden on us just to, some of the other things that have come out of the site plan and trying to get this all resolved. And I don't know if this is the proper form for this or not, but I understand the sidewalk. I've been a proponent of that for many years. However, there is a landscaping requirement now that we're being asked to abide by. Would that be something we, I would need to file another waiver? Or could we also consider that as part of this discussion?
So I would ask, you might want to speak with Eric Lundee after this hearing, if he's available. But with that said, if you've submitted a site plan and you disagree with a requirement in the site plan, then your option there would be to appeal that to the plan and zoning commission.
In a separate, okay.
To the plan and zoning commission, which is different from us.
I see, okay. Well, I was prepared to discuss that, but I do, I do know this is a very, it's a business district. From the back of the building, you cannot see the rooftop unit at all from the neighboring street. And I do have the support of our next door neighbor who signed and turned a card back in. So that's all I really have to say unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Sandra?
I actually do have a question. It appears that your representative didn't bring his alternate screening options that were presented to the city. Do you have those with you?
No, I, no, I don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, with just a few moments left here, we'll go ahead and see if there's anybody else here to speak in support. Seeing none, do we have anybody who's speaking opposition? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? Don't see any, all right.
I can comment on the, the other alternate designs if you want me to.
Ah, since you kind of brought it up, sure.
Well, I could see that was a question mark from legal, so. That wasn't part of the, the board of adjustment application. But, so he's speaking to what was submitted for the building review and the site plan reviews. So again, I think the fail was based on code, building code or mechanical code, not because it failed to meet what zoning would require. So that can be two different things. Zoning can, zoning sets the standard of what has to happen, which is to prevent the view from street level view in a manner that's compatible with the building.
Right.
So that's the standard, there's many ways to do that, or there should be many ways to design that way. What's the most practical, that's up to the applicant, we don't want to design that for it. In that same process, they also need to ensure they're not conflicting with other code requirements for the, for the mechanical unit or the structure of the roof or, so, so that's another layer they do have to comply with. And then kind of the third thing, as I mentioned, the value of this was significant enough that it triggered the site planning requirements. So some of those other things that were mentioned were also triggered independently of what the board looks at here, so.
So is the city have someone on staff that can give them some guidance and direction when this guy goes to design a screen versus, "Bring me what you want, and I'll tell you if that's, if you hit the target or not," because I feel like we're asking him to do something and he doesn't even know what to do.
Yeah, I mean, we have, it hap, you know, we get numerous examples of designs that, that comply. There's, there's systems out there that are available.
I'm just, but he hasn't been told that yet, so I'm just.
Well, again, we don't design it for him.
No, I'm not asking you to design it, I just say, "Here's the general components, we do it for signs."
Yeah, he should get, yeah.
We have to at least give him some direction so that he's, because I feel like right now, he's playing a golf hole and he doesn't even know where the green is. He's just hitting the golf ball all over the place. If, if he's come with two designs, now maybe he hasn't listened, maybe it's there, I don't know. But let's try and be solution oriented here and help guide this through, so, because obviously, he's frustrated.
Yeah, and, and
As is his client.
From my discussions with the building official, it's, there's ways to do it. It may be more expensive than they're willing to do. That's entirely possible.
And if that's what it is, and that's the only choice he's got, that's fine. And if he chooses not to want to adopt that, that burden impasse, that he doesn't know that.
The standard is that it be compatible. Obviously, it can't be something that is contrary to the mechanical code from a safety perspective.
And I don't know, Eric, oh, I'm, I'm not finding fault with anything you're saying. I'm just saying, he doesn't, he acts like he doesn't even know what he can build.
Well, well, we're going to work with them to try to, if, you know, depending on which way this gets decided by the board, we're, we're going to work with them to get compliance. That's, our building staff, our Permit and Development Center staff will continue to work with them. You know, we don't really have the resources to do a lot of internal design work, but.
No, I'm not saying that, let's just give him, let's give him the parameters.
Hopefully, we can give them direction, we can point them towards people that do this kind of thing. We can, you know, that, that's definitely something that we can.
How about we just tell him what's acceptable?
Is there a point where?
I'd, I'd like to move the hearing along. I think everybody's made their point here, including yourself, Eric. So I want to give John an opportunity for two minutes if he would like to say anything else in closing. John, since we've had more than just a few facts answered, I think there's still a few questions on the table of what staff suggested to you, maybe what you suggested to them. I'm just going to let you wrap this up with two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, and to all of you. I appreciate your, your questions, too. I don't recall I have any information in my hands about any mechanical code sections that this applies to. So I'll be digging back into that when I get back. But I'm, I'm still a young enough guy that I, I can have a good memory. I don't think that's ever been said. The second piece is that, and, and I appreciate greatly your comments. How many times do you have to hit that golf ball? I, we're engineers by nature, solution oriented. I've definitely made numerous attempts to solve this with numerous designs. I've been told what I can't do, even though the ordinance says what, doesn't say how you're supposed to do it, but yet I'm being told means and methods. And we just want to get it solved. We prefer to paint it. It's already painted the same color as the building, but I realize you have a decision to make. But I would urge a deeper look into this particular ordinance and how it applies here, because it's very confusing. And I've been a licensed engineer in the, in Des Moines area for 25 years. I've never had to stand here, and I've never had this problem with the city. So I'm, I'm very confused on process.
But you have screened units before in your 25 years?
Actually, I have not.
Well, there you go, so, new experience.
Well, being an engineer, you, everything you design is something new. Screen's no different. I don't think it's a fair process to force an existing building owner to puncture their, their roof a dozen times for a screen when there's other alternatives, like the ones I've been, I've presented, that are literally around the metro area, so.
All right, all right, thank you, John.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Bet, appreciate your closing. Okay, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
No, this is my thought, I mean, this is a totally different case. When we showed the pictures, if the intent of this is prosthetics as you're walking by, it blends in with the trees. I had a hard time seeing it. So in this case, I'm saying that the cases are even solved. It's, it blends in, you don't, doesn't stand out. And in the winter time, the trees, the bark is still there because it's brown. I'm inclined to say, to allow this variance to go through.
So what you're saying is each of these cases were separate issues?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Any other comments?
No, I, I think I would agree with one, kind of the same situation that we had further down the street. It blends in, you can't really see it.
Yeah.
They had to point it out before I would have even noticed it. The other one was more obvious, this one not so much.
The other one was more obvious, but there is still, there are still reasons to have the screening. And I believe it still needs to be scripted.
Well, the reasons for the screening was so you don't see it from the street.
Right.
And it's, it's camouflaged, you're going to see the screening. So I think, I'm, I'm going to make a, a motion that we allow the variance for this unit to stay the way it is and not have to be screened.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to grant the requested variance, kind of as is. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Okay, that's four opposed, two. Okay, so the motion does carry. So that passes, so you're granted the variance to keep that mechanical unit, so.
I'm in a request that the chair be carry the burden of making sure that we document how it meets the criteria.
Yes, I think, yes, I apologize for that, yeah, the, how it meets the intent of the ordinance to grant the variance.
I, I would say that it needs to be one of the persons who voted for it rather than the chair who voted against it.
Oh, okay, because he was the one signing the order, that's why.
Okay, so he signed, he voted against it.
He signs the order, that's why I said that.
Okay, so my reasons are, is that the intent of the ordinance is for the unit to be not obviously visible from the street or to blend in to the rest of surroundings. And the unit as it stands right now meets those criteria.
Thank you.
It's adequately screened by the trees that are surrounding it.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I appreciate Eric's clarification. You, you did generally allude to that, but it's always good to hit the nail on the head, so that's good. Thank you, Eric. Okay, is that clear enough for the record, Gwynne?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, so that motion carried four to two. And Sandra, Bankers Trust, great story, historic, awesome foundation of our community. So thank you for everything you do in the Des Moines area. You bet. Okay, that'll bring us then to item number, we skipped nine, is that correct?
No, skipping nine, ten.
So, item number 10, a conditional use permit request for 2956 East Grand Avenue.
Item number 10 is a request from the Main Gate Tavern. It's really at the, near the main entrance to the Iowa State Fairgrounds. It's located in this building right here at the northwest corner of East Grand Avenue and East 30th Street. Right now, the subject property is comprised of three separate parcels. The Main Gate Tavern is on the easternmost parcel. There's a single family house on the middle parcel. And then there's a parking lot that wraps around on all three. They are owned by the same entity. The Main Gate Tavern is proposing to add a patio along the west side of the building. The patio would measure, I believe, 60, 60 feet by 16 feet. As you can see from this sketch, the proposed patio would cross over a building line, or I'm sorry, a property line. This is the, the design of the patio that they've submitted. It would be 60 feet long by 16 feet wide. This is just the floor plan that shows 60 feet by 16 feet. And then this drawing of the railing. Here's some site photos, again, this is the bar that's at the corner. The patio would be in between the building and this house. So it's just moving further west on the site. They currently have a small concrete patio. This conditional use permit would allow for a larger wooden structure to be built in that same general area. And then here's the picture of the house. It does have a current rental certificate to be used as a single family house. And then here is the consent map. We had two cards come back in support. Let's put those up here. Neither card, I guess, the first card didn't say anything, they just said, "This will not affect."
Greater Iowa credit.
I think that's the credit union to the north. Staff looked at this, and we did believe that it met the criteria. However, given the close proximity of residential uses, we have recommended a condition, and it's number three on the list, that says there should be no outdoors patios or amplified sound at any time. We feel that if there's no amplified sound, then the impacts to the neighbors would be significantly lessened. We've also recommended that the three parcels be combined into a single parcel. We don't, the building code doesn't allow for structures to be built over the property lines. So at the minimum, they're going to have to combine these two parcels. So we just felt that it'd be more appropriate to combine all three, since the parking lot already goes over all of those parking, or properties. For the sake of time, I won't read through the other conditions, but there's nine in total, and they're all pretty standard for taverns, other than conditions two and three, so. Any questions for me?
Questions for Bert?
Does combining them change the zoning? Or is there, are you, is there a zoning requirement that we, we have to meet?
Well, the building code would require them to be combined, since you're not allowed to build a structure across the property line without providing fire rating.
So is, is the tavern a commercial?
Yeah, it's all zone C2.
It is, okay.
Yeah, if you look at this property here, property, map here, this blue line is the boundary between the C2 district along East 30th Street and then the R160, little family residential neighborhood. So the, all three parcels are already zoned C2.
Okay, thanks.
Bert, you had referenced the preexistence of that concrete patio, which apparently would be on that second parcel, is that right?
Yeah.
Is that currently being used as a service area, as part of the business?
Photo shows a grill out there, so they might be doing some.
But as far as, I guess, any preexisting permissions for that use?
Right.
You don't have any on file?
No.
Okay, all right. And if we are inclined to grant this, and they do combine the lots, then when we have the rental house sitting there on the same quote property as Main Gate Bar and Grill, does that present any issues down the line for the rental certificate of the house?
I'm not sure, but it's possible that it could, and so that's something that they would have to explore.
Because I think very close to this neighborhood, off Dean, we had that one where there were like two houses on one lot, and the one was secondary, and then there were some questions about having that secondary use on the, on the property.
Right.
So perhaps, you know, just the applicant can think about that, discuss that with you all to make sure if they want to go through with this, they don't hang themselves up.
Right.
Or maybe down the line, they'll just get rid of the house and really expand the place.
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name's Frank Asfag, and I'm the business of the Main Gate owner. And, well, what I propose is right here, black railing fence that goes down. Then we go over here to the building and hook onto it. And, you know, you can put tables out there and umbrellas and, you know, people want to get out, get in the sun and all that stuff, and, you know, and I'm, I'm having a golf benefit for Blankstone Hospital, and I'd like to have the, all the people that want to stay outside. Hopefully, it don't rain, but, you know. But it's going to be use for the customers, just get out in the sun, relax, have a conversation out there, and, oh, I'm not going to allow any glass or, out there would be all cans or plastic cups, you know, so I don't want to clean up all that broken glass all the time, so. And on this, if you look right down here, I don't know if you can read it. This is on the SS report, it was, Beer Garden was fenced 580 square feet that they did back in '01. Now, all's I've got a question, what, how come that wasn't grandfathered in all the way through there?
You may or may not have had a building permit, but that's what the assessor saw, and the assessor loves to add taxable value to you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you can't use it, then you're getting taxed for something they're saying.
Oh, you got to take that up with Polk County, not us. But if we can figure this out here, tell, tell us about what, what, again, you were telling us about what you wanted to. You got the plan with the wooden deck there?
A five-foot black railing fence, and I'll have two exit gates, you know, the one-way gates, just in case something happens out there, they got to get out. And, you know, I, there's, I got a speaker out there, but I can set the level at a certain sound, you know, vocal thing, so it won't go. vocal thing, so it won't go any higher, and I'd probably shut it off at ten o'clock at night.
So Frank, you've seen the staff is recommending approval for what you want to do.
Yeah.
But like Bert outlined, there would be a few conditions, and they do want you to legally combine those parcels. Is that okay?
Well, the owner of the property is here with me.
Yeah.
So.
Did you have a chance to talk that over before the hearing started?
Well, we didn't. No, uh-uh, we didn't.
Okay.
And it also states no, uh, outdoor speakers or amplified sound on the premise at any time.
Yeah, that often has become an issue for this board, uh, when we've granted folks outdoor patios, and we say no amplified music, and then, oh, they just have a little amplified, and then suddenly it gets a lot bigger than what anybody thought.
What about a radio or something like that?
Like a boombox?
No.
I, yeah, we, we try not to micromanage that, but in essence, if you had a sound system hooked up to any degree, wired up, that's, that was kind of staff's intent to not have that, I believe.
Okay, I'll just tell them they gotta sing.
Softly.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so staff's, staff's generally on line with what you want to do, but with those conditions and.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That sound okay to you for the most part?
Yeah, most part, yeah.
As we can get it, okay. All right.
You wanna go on now, or you want me to sit down, or what?
If you've got anything else to add, if, if not, yeah, we could.
The owner's here, so we can ask the owner some questions.
Yeah, if the owner wants to add five minutes of support for it, sure, if they can do that. Okay. Thank you, Frank.
Hi, I'm Jim Carthen, the, uh, owner of the property, and, uh, in regard to that, uh, issue, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, uh, do that. Frank does lease the entire three lots, including the house, and, uh, and, and so I'm good with that.
Okay.
I was happy to see that, uh, they did recommend that, that, uh, you go through the proposal. And the only other thing I could add is that, that the, uh, patio did exist in July one nineteen eighty-eight, when I bought the property, and, uh, it's been used off and on for the customers since then.
Sure.
So, uh, is there anything else that I can help you with?
No, if you're, if you're generally okay, which most people are with us approving what you want to do, that's number one,
Yeah.
to allow for the patio, but those nine conditions would go with it. And in essence, combining those parcels would be good for you, because we couldn't allow you to expand your new deck onto another parcel, e- even if you own it. So you'd need to combine those parcels to begin with.
And, uh, what does that entail then as far as, where do we go from here, in other words?
Um, I can let staff talk to you off the record, but basically, you just probably talk to real estate attorney, you file a document down at the Polk County Recorders to officially combine pre-existing lots. If they've all, or lots of record are surveyed already, then I think that's a pretty straightforward process. Is that right, Gwenna?
It may be, yeah. I mean, there's sometimes, sometimes I've seen, um, a parcel tie agreement done, or otherwise a new plat. I think that's our preference.
Uh, I'm sorry, but I am harder hearing and, uh, it's been a little difficult for me to follow.
Okay. Well, uh, I have seen a parcel tie agreement been presented and recorded. Um, preferably, we would see a new plat come in, um, combining the three lots, and that would be recorded. Um, so that would get reviewed by the city as well as by the county, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Abstract.
Yeah.
And then you would combine the legal descriptions as part of the plat.
Yeah. If, if you work with a business attorney for your normal business dealings, they could probably either tell you the basics of what it would take, or recommend an attorney that's familiar with those, and help you through that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, all right, come on up. Whoever wants to go first. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, my name is Melody Woodling. I live at twenty-nine twenty-seven East Grand. And I did return a card that we, we got, me and my husband signed it.
Okay.
Well, I mailed it last weekend.
Yeah. Well, if, if you're here in opposition today, that's even better than a card. I'd rather hear from you than read a card, so.
Good, because they said that they would, they admitted to having a sound system outside, which has gone on past midnight. They, the workers that work there blasted. We have to listen to profanity, we have to listen to fights. There is glass bottles taken out there. They've been thrown at vehicles in the street. Okay, it's twenty-nine twenty-seven, I live across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And there's the hotel, and then I live four houses.
Okay.
It's ridiculous. We've called the police numerous times. And they either have a policeman that's giving them the message that they're on their way, or they have scanners going, because by the time they turn the noise down, it, the cops, cops will show up, so. We've even asked them to do it by computer, and, so it's gotta be a cop giving them the information that they're being called on. I mean, it's ridiculous. My grandkids can't come spend the night on the weekends. It's terrible. As far as I'm concerned, it needs to be shut down and turned back into a laundromat or a little grocery store that it used to be.
Well, Melody, what, what I can tell you is, one of the things about this entire process is, for operations like a tavern, they have what's called a conditional use permit. So if there are significant violations of community standards like noise and, um, uh, disturbances and stuff like that, that can be reviewed by the city zoning enforcement officer, and that could be brought in front of this board to see about revocation of a conditional use permit. So whenever somebody's operating a tavern, they always have to watch what they're doing, because they could lose that conditional use permit.
Well, they don't care though. They don't care, they just lie about it, so.
So what we'd have to get into, and that's probably beyond our hearing today, 'cause we just have to look at a, any direct evidence somebody has, mostly related to the potential to put this patio, or this deck, I want to call it, the deck out there. So if we approve this today, as you can see, we have nine conditions. And maybe those conditions are some reminders that the owner really needs, so that they can understand what it's gonna take going forward to operate, because if, if I would, if this would come in front of us and there are problems in the future, um, I'm gonna be very unhappy.
Okay, now who do we need to report problems to?
Well, uh, you had mentioned the police, but if it's a zoning issue related to some certain things, you can talk to the city's, um, uh, zoning enforcement officer and their, and their community development department. And then, Gwenna, anything you want to add?
The Neighborhood Inspections Division, and they would actually be in charge of, um, what Mr. Penns described about, uh, this board reconsidering the conditional use permit. That wouldn't be the police, it would actually be this board, but you would want to start with the Neighborhood Inspections Division of the Community Development Department.
So is the fence gonna be a, a privacy fence that they're gonna put up, or is it gonna be a chain link?
Bert can kind of show us the picture here.
I mean, 'cause I, a lady across the street from me seen a person, they, they serve them till they fall down. Friday night, fell out in the street, puddle of blood out in the street. I mean, it's, okay, that's not gonna do any noise thing for us.
I, I think the fence is just primarily designed to keep the service area, the patio, and keep the patrons within the service area. Now, if, if somebody's out in the public right-of-way, or the sidewalk, and they're, you know, have a public intoxication thing going on, um, that generally is where police reports start to come in, so.
But if, to, to address her concern about the sound, the speaker, and the music, that's a condition.
We aren't gonna have any.
There, there won't be any, so if there is that, they've got a real problem.
Sure, yeah.
So I think just, your concern is being addressed with the conditions that they're gonna have to meet.
Right.
if they want to build this patio. And if they can't meet those conditions, and I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, but we can revoke this, and they won't have it anymore.
Right.
The ability to use that patio outside.
Yeah.
So this is a, they're asking our permission, and we're saying if you want to play by the rules, you can. If you don't, then we, we may make, make you stay inside.
Okay, so then I need to contact the zoning, correct?
Yeah. And if you want to visit with staff after this agenda item, we, we can have them provide you names and numbers of who you would need to contact. And I would say that for, for any property or, or issue in your neighborhood, not, not, not just this business. If you do have other zoning concerns, whoever they may be, they can give you who to talk to.
You know, myself, I'd love to move, but my house is paid for. Why should I have a house payment?
Right.
Because.
Sure.
A rowing place down the street.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been on this board for over twelve years, and this is the first time this, this location's been in front of us, and they're not in front of us because they're in trouble. They're in front of us because they want to do an expansion of the existing use, and that's why we want to make sure there's reasonable conditions on that.
So see, someone's not getting messages to other people, because I've called on them several times.
Okay. And sometimes working with your city council folks are good too, so just for.
We have, we're with Skip Moore.
Okay. He's not on the council?
He's running again, but he's not on the council now.
He's not on the council.
And I've talked to the Gatto, Mike Gatto.
Joe, yes, 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 okay.
Talked to him.
Okay. All right, anything else you want to add in closing?
I just think it's a bad idea.
Okay, all right, that's what we're here to listen to. All right, thank you, Melody. Okay, anybody else here to speak in opposition? Come on up.
My name is Leonard Overton, eleven twenty-nine fourteen East Grand Avenue. Uh, I just want to echo what, uh, Melody just said. Uh, I live seven houses west of this bar. Uh, when I first bought the house twelve years ago, it was a relatively quiet neighborhood. About two or three years later, we started getting all the noise coming from the bar. Uh, loudspeakers with loud music and everything. You can hear, uh, screaming and hollering, foul language, I mean, you name it, it's happening. There's fights down there that probably don't get reported half the time. The event has been, been going on for all these years. I just don't understand why, all of a sudden, they're wanting to comply with the law. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much, Leonard. Appreciate you spending your time here, your patience, and your comments. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? Um, I just have one, Bert, you usually do that five-hundred-foot radius report thing, and
Yep.
to the best of your knowledge, was there anything that stood out exceptionally?
Uh, well, actually, in the last two years, there were only two, um, times that the police were called to the property. At least, that's what the reports provided by the police department showed. One was, uh, back in June of, uh, twenty eighteen, there was a report of an intimidation at the bar, and then the other one was in October, there was, um, all the same case with the one person, um, was found on the premise, so. I, and also dealt with the motor vehicle theft. So I don't know if that in itself is related to the bar, but that police report's attributed to that property at least.
And East Thirty-first is a major north-south thoroughfare there, so when police make a stop near East Thirty-first and Grand for any moving violation, they throw that down, right? East Thirty-first and Grand, okay.
But this one's actually at that address, you're right.
But, but the ones you've highlighted were related to.
To that address, yeah.
But just two that you've noted specifically that you can pull out, okay?
And then it also, I wanted to mention that the existing bar has been there, um, since before the city had conditional per, use permit requirements, so the bar itself is considered grandfathered in, and it doesn't have a conditional use permit.
So what happens now with this conditional use permit? Is this for the serving area, or is now everything drawn in?
I believe it's just for the expansion area. The board, you know, if, and that's defer to Gwenna, but possibly the board could make that a condition, is that the conditional use permit would apply to the entire.
Entire building?
Is that affected by when you combine the pieces of property? Does that change anything?
I don't believe that would.
Okay.
Is that a trigger, I think maybe you're asking?
Yeah.
Is that a trigger where we could add that in?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
I would rather not have this conversation, um, right now, but, um, but, um, what I believe I've seen you guys, you as staff do in the past, is, um, when someone comes in, in this regard, it would be a conditional use for the entire proper, the entire use, rather than just the expansion. I'm not confident that it has been no, noticed that way.
Right.
And so, uh, similar to the item that was continued earlier, um, we required that to be continued because the, it, the relief was changed, and the notice needed to be changed. And so I would think that would be the case here as well.
So you think this should be continued?
Well, you notice that, or?
I think she's saying if you're gonna include the existing tavern in the conditional use permit, then it would need to be.
That, that is what I'm seeing, and what I feel like I've seen done before is that that would have been included.
Right. It also gives the applicant the opportunity, if we continue it, they can discuss this with staff or their own advisors to determine if they even want to proceed forward with what they're asking for. Or if, based on that discussion, it should include the entire operation, then they take that into account when they come back to us, right? Yeah, so if anything, it gives them more time to think through this, of what the ramifications are, what the parameters would be, and what is under the jurisdiction then of the conditional use permit in the future.
But they're also on notice now.
Well, there's not a conditional use permit for the old bar, and frankly, in my opinion, I don't know that any permission's been granted for use of the patio for an outdoor service area in the past. I, you know, the.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the assessor might be assessing it as that. I don't know.
Right.
But that's not up to us to look into today, I don't believe.
Right, that's not part of us, other than that we're aware of things now that we weren't aware of.
Yeah. I like businesses to be able to operate, operate well. I like to preserve character of the neighborhood, so I think it, it might be best. If the applicant would agree, if we were to look at a continuance, would the applicant be okay with that, have some time to think through this? You guys want to step up?
Yeah, I just took over this business on January two.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm trying to change the image a little bit. I'm taking the signs down, gonna put up a new sign. It's gonna have a Ferris wheel on the back, and it says, "Welcome to Main Gate," you know, I mean, it's a place to go watch football, baseball, whatever, you know. And I'll cut the wire to the speaker tonight, and then if they have any kind of complaints, they can call me. I'll give them my cellphone, and then I'll go down and I'll investigate everything.
Sure. And, and that's always good, I appreciate that as an operator of a tavern. But what we're kind of getting at here is, again, we're talking about some pretty important legal stuff here. So if we are inclined to grant this patio, or this deck expansion, in essence, the discussion we're having is this could draw in your pre-existing tavern to have more oversight uh, by zoning enforcement and this board than it has had in the past. And if you're a good operator, you shouldn't have a problem with that, but by the same token, you might want to pause and think about that. And we want to make sure everybody understands what they're getting into. So what we've kind of discussed here is, is having you sit down and talk with our staff a little more, and staff as well, to look at their own ordinance, and see if we were inclined to grant this deck, do we have to draw your whole bar into our oversight now here at this board, in simple terms? I don't know if that's a true legal approach, but.
I think that summarizes it, and then, um, the continuance would, would be to June, it would be this time in June.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, just be a month later to review this again.
And there would be a new notice given, um, to include the, to clarify that it's the tavern itself, as well as the patio. Um, it would be given to the same people, so it wouldn't be any different area, it'd be the same people. Um, sometimes when we. Sometimes when we give new notice that is on the applicant to pay for, for example, the one earlier today, they requested a change, so they are going to be required to pay for that notification. I'm not sure in this instance whether that would be a city cost or an applicant cost.
Right, right. Yeah, they'd probably try to help you as best as possible if this is more of an interpretation and not something you're trying to change. Yeah. So if that sounds okay with you, I think it would be better for us to all kind of work through this together. And, yeah, and staff can get back with you like later this week on that. But let's see what Eric has to say.
Well, I was gonna ask Legal if it was okay to grant this as it was notified, and then continue it for consideration of the full premise, if that's necessary.
No, I don't believe so, because then he's gonna end up having to pay another fee.
Because if they denied it
Which is not any benefit to him. He would have to pay another, how much ever you charge for the conditional use permit request, versus just coming in one time and have a potentially notification fee, which I'm not confident is even his responsibility at this point.
Okay. So the way it was noticed, it was noticed for a conditional use permit, which, if you look at 954, that is for the premise. That's the way it's written in the code. Now, it does say the proposal is for the patio. That's what's triggering it, because they can't extend or expand a non-conforming situation.
And I think the way that it was just described needs further review by city staff.
Okay.
The proposal was, is what's confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've
Okay, yeah. So, I think I think that Frank is trying to do the best thing here for today. So he sounds like he'd be okay if we want to continue this. And I know there's been a lot of concerns expressed by residents as well. And I want to make sure we see the big picture here as much as possible. So I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to the next regularly scheduled meeting. And therein, if staff needs to renotice or the appropriate process, they'll explain that to the applicant and take care of it from there.
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, got a motion, and a second from Marla. All those in favor to continue this to next month, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 6-0. Okay, everybody learned something new at Zoning Board of Adjustment. So hang in there, guys, and staff will reach out to you probably later this week. And we'll kind of see how we need to look at this for next month, okay? Yes, and we're gonna take a little five-minute break here, and then we'll re-adjourn no later than 20 after.
It's being converted to a small grocery store. The small grocery store use is allowed. It's the sales of beer and wine that necessitates the conditional use permit. Subject property is located on the north side of Army Post Road at its intersection with South Union Street. Here's the floor plan of the limited food sales establishment that is being put in. I'll have to let the applicant show where they would be storing their beer and wine. Here are some site photos. Again, it was an old come-and-go gas station that's being converted to the limited food sales establishment. They have been making some site improvements, including landscaping and restoring curbs. I believe they put a small addition onto the side for the cooler. And then here's the consent map. So there are a few cards in opposition that are being passed around right now. Staff looked at this, and we felt that they do meet the criteria for selling beer and wine. The property is Zone C2. It meets the separation distance requirements, since there's no existing church, park, school, or daycare that's within 150 feet of the property. So we felt that with the appropriate conditions, this could be a viable option. So we've recommended approval, subject to this list of 11 conditions. I won't read through them all for the sake of time, but again, number two would prohibit the sale of alcoholic liquor. It would be beer and wine only. And I've also just included the standard conditions. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Bert?
Nope.
Okay. Welcome, Nathan. All right. Applicant or the representative of the applicant, you're welcome to step up.
Hi, I'm Karina Cruz, I'm the owner. This will be a grocery store. We will sell, we're gonna have a meat department, fresh produce, limited, ready-to-go food. And we will sell beer, just beer, not wine. And we, I think we're just gonna use this
You have to actually keep it right at the
Oops, sorry.
Point at it, yeah.
There's like three doors, so I plan to use those for beer. Maybe just two doors.
You're saying there's three doors in that one cooler? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's a lot more, but like this
Yep.
This place has like three doors.
Okay, all right. But that would be the only one that would have beer in it, then?
Beer.
Okay. The rest of your cool storage would be for soda pop and milk and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are you planning to sell cigarettes?
Yeah. I already have the permit.
Okay, okay. But you're primarily looking to be a local kind of grocery store, is that correct? Okay. What will your hours of operation be?
7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Daily, seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anybody have any more questions for the applicant? I just kind of dived in there. I'm curious about a couple of things. We had a few cards that have come in, some comments, that discussed when this was a convenience store owned by a large convenience store company. Not that they did anything wrong, but they sold a fair amount of alcohol and cigarettes there. And there were reportedly a lot of problems with people loitering, causing fights, crime, littering. Do you think your operation's gonna be run different than what I would call a convenience store?
Yeah, I think so. My parents own a Mexican store already, and their sales are like less than 8% of alcohol.
Okay, less than 8. So you might have Tecate or Dos Equis, or
Yeah.
Right? That kind of stuff that might go with the type of food you're selling?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I like both of those, so. Okay.
Good enough.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
Have you run a store like this before?
Oh, yeah. My parents' store, they are pretty much all the time in Mexico, so
Okay. And they have locations in Des Moines now?
Yeah, it's La Tapatia 3.
La Tapatia 3. Is that the one that's off of Wattress and Southeast 14th?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, good.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Step on up.
This is my first time being here in two days.
Okay. Well, you've had some time to see how things go.
I did.
Welcome. Just need your name.
My name is David Chapman. I live directly behind Building 106 Southwest 11.
Sure, yep. I know where you're at.
There is a fence there. The fence has never stopped the crime or the other problems we've had there before. So I am against it for the following reasons. This will draw more noise, crimes, fights, beer runs, robberies. There is now a biker gang hangout site, two doors down at 125 Army Post Road, and a drug dealer around the corner. Who is already causing noise, fights, revving engines, loud music all night long, especially on Thursday through Sunday. They will have closer access to booze and will get worse. There were two fights last weekend at 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. Over the years, I have found out it does not do any good to call in. They come out, talk to me, go talk to them, it happens the next day again. I have witnessed many crimes at 101 or at Army Post Road over the years. When it was a come-and-go, I had to put my cameras up on my house. I have 13 cameras in my house. Some looking at there, some looking at the front of my house, surrounding my house, and inside my house. I had, I had, I had to put the cameras up to help protect them and us in the neighborhood. I have given my, many videos of crime to the police. I have called Come and Go to warn them that a crime was coming across my yard, the crooks and drunks parking front of my house to get their quick getaway. I also have the Ford guys walking by here every day. They will be getting their alcohol there, hide behind the building, and drink it. I've seen it. My wife and I and some of my neighbors have had to resort to carrying guns to protect their own yards. Please don't run us all out of the neighborhood. I know of one neighbor who has already tried to leave because of all the crime and stuff that's in the area. I hope this wasn't already a done deal, and a waste of time. I know these people have spent thousands of dollars to renovate this house, this building. I'm not against the grocery store. If it's a grocery store, that's fine. But the beer and liquor, and I'm sure in the future, the application for alcohol will be there. That's the problem. It draws crime because of those items. When Come and Go was there, they had a part-time cop sometimes. It did no good. It did no good. I mean, they would pull up my house, walk around the building, see the cops standing there, and leave. Otherwise, they would have done whatever they was gonna do. There's no other reason to park in front of my house and go over there than not to commit a crime. The fights and the beer run that were out there was ridiculous. This biker gang that's two doors down at 125 Army Post Road, nobody's doing anything about it. I don't know if everybody's afraid of them or what.
David, I'm very familiar with that location that you're talking about, but that location is not this location, and that location is not this applicant, so
But it's gonna draw those people over to their area to get the booze, take it back, and have their parties. But it's gonna draw those people over to their area to get the booze, take it back, and have their parties.
Can't they get that at QT and Come and Go to the west now?
Sure. Go somewhere else and get it. I don't care.
Right. That's why I specifically asked her how extensive her selection will be. And she said, "I don't wanna sell wine. I don't wanna sell liquor. I wanna sell a little bit of beer to go with my grocery store." Which Hy-Vee does that at every location in Spades. So based on what she's wanting to do and that floor plan and what you've seen with how they've improved that site.
Come and Go had beer there too.
And a lot of other stuff. Yep. Yep. And Come and Go hasn't been there for four years.
Right. And it's been pretty, other than the examples I'm telling you about, you know, it's not as bad as it was.
Yeah. I don't live too far from there myself.
I don't wanna get worse again.
Right. I don't live too far from there myself, so trust me. I'm concerned about Army Post corridor and keeping proven it.
The cops, they patrol down Army Post Road. Let's control, patrol down the side streets there where people are coming in the back way because they're too drunk. And Army Post Road was being seen.
Yeah. Yeah. Those are some separate issues, but we could maybe talk another time. I'd love to do that. Okay?
Okay. I'm sorry, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, do we have any?
I got one.
Oh. All right. Sorry about that.
My name's Bernie Weisong. I live at 106 Lally. I live across the street from Dave. I know when Come and Go was there, he was absolutely correct. They parked all along Lally Street and did their, they'd pull up, park, run over there, steal the beer, run across. It's a common thing. These folks are gonna be in for robberies. I hate to break the news to them, but if they haven't gotten prepared for it, they should be. It's a tough neighborhood. I carry a handgun to mow my grass. It's ridiculous. It's not gonna get better with the addition of more alcohol. I got trash to pick up on a daily basis from fast food joints. This is another one. I have four lots on that corner. It's a big area to keep clean, and I'm 70 years old. Who's the guy he's talking about moving? Me. I've had enough. It's just ridiculous. It's not getting better. I hope you guys are listening. These folks spent thousands and thousands of dollars. They put in a nice little patio out back. I hope you're gonna put in something about not having outside music.
This is gonna be a grocery store. I don't think it's gonna have outside music.
Okay. That, yeah, I get it. I get it. There's a little patio out back that's not on your blueprint. I can look over his fence and look at it. It's fenced in. Six-foot chain, or six-foot privacy fence.
Okay.
It's not gonna have music. It's not gonna do this. If you guys don't stop it, nobody's gonna, and like I said, I'm the guy that's moving. Why? If you guys don't listen to us, you allowed them to do all this work, and then they come in for the permit. Shouldn't have been the other way.
Us guys are your fellow residents and citizens. That's who us guys are.
Those folks, they did all this work, so you have to give them the permit.
We don't have to give them anything. That's why we're having a hearing to listen to what they want to do.
But they've done all this work and spent all that money.
And they could still open a grocery store and don't have to sell any beer. So that's what we're here to decide. They have the right to run a grocery store there. The board has no say.
We'll believe it when I see it. The proof will be in the pudding.
Well, they're here to listen.
Thanks.
You bet. Appreciate you coming down, Bernie. Okay. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, do you have any further questions for staff?
Is there, on the conditional use permit, we says we can allow up to 40% of the sales be liquor. She stated that her average was 8%. Can we limit it down to 20% to give her room and just kinda cut down the amount of sales?
If we do that, we're gonna have automatic audits, and I don't know that the board should be getting into that unless we have a reason.
She's only selling beer. She doesn't even wanna sell wine.
I'm just trying to make Karina happy. Okay, thank you.
I have to defer to Glenna on that.
No, I've got my answer.
Okay.
Good question, though. And yes, she's clearly stated all she wants to do is sell a limited amount of beer in a very limited cooler that she pointed out to us. And we could limit that and just say that. That, you know, it's being limited to beer only in this square footage or this area. I think we can be that clear, can't we?
I believe so. I know that you've done that in the past.
Yeah. Our staff recommendation was for wine and beer, so if the board wanted to, you could change it to just beer, and you could add the sale of wine and alcoholic liquor shall be prohibited. But I don't believe staff's gonna change our recommendation, so.
Okay. And we'll come back to the applicant here in a minute. So, Dave?
I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Applicant, you can come back up with a closing remarks since there were a couple of people that did express some pretty significant concerns about perhaps the neighborhood and past operations there. Is there anything you wanna add to how you plan to operate?
The fence that you saw outside is to cover like the compressor, the exhaust for the kitchen. That's, there's. And the beer, it's just like an extra. I mean, is, we don't sell, right now, the store at La Tapatia 3, we don't sell. I just did a check today for $1,1200. That's what we pay like weekly, so it's not, it's not that much. It's just like, like an extra.
So from your beer distributor, that's the largest amount you bought from them? Okay. Do you plan to just sell these in like six packs or 12 packs or cases and not singles?
Yeah, there's six packs and 12 packs.
Okay. But you're not selling single cans?
No, not single.
And that's what Come and Go and Quick Trip do. They sell single cans, I think. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay.
I have one question.
One more.
When you have security for your building, do you have cameras on the outside?
Yeah.
Okay.
I already have ADT already installed, like 10 cameras, maybe.
Okay.
I'm waiting for media companies to install the internet so we can get the beer alarm.
Okay, thank you.
With La Tapatia 3, have you had any problems with robberies or excessive crime on your property at the other location you operate on the south side?
I've been there for 12 years, and it's just been a couple times.
Okay. Which is unfortunate, but. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
There's a lot of angry neighbors.
Yes. I live pretty close to this area myself. Come and Go, when they operated here, they were one of the first folks in front of us under the new ordinance for the conditional use permits for the liquor, wine, and beer, and we denied it. Because there was graffiti all over the buildings. There was garbage everywhere. They didn't take care of their landscaping. We denied that. Come and Go was not happy about that. But we care about the neighbors, too. But this building has sat vacant for four years. There's a lot of other buildings that are underutilized or vacant on that corridor. My opinion, if we've got somebody that wants to invest in this and run a grocery store and have one small section of a cooler selling some beer when they're closed by 10:00 p.m. at night, if there's any problems in the neighborhood, I sure hope it ain't affiliated with them. And if it's with anybody else, you guys gotta sit down with your councilman, the police chief, Dana Wingert, and start getting this stuff figured out. You should not have to put up with this. You should not have to. Yeah. Right.
Telephone call by my house, marked with a gang, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's a number to call, and then the city has a process to get rid of that. They have a gang unit try to work on that. But I don't like seeing that either, anyway. So I can understand your frustration.
I think we have to give consideration to, this is not a corporate entity that's just looking at a profit line. This is somebody who's running a small business. When a person is invested in the business, they care more about the business, and they're on site. Past records, this is not her first entry into this line of work, you know? So she is well aware of the pitfalls with the family. And I would be in favor of going with this, and she has said her sales were about 8% and limited to two coolers. Or at the most, three coolers. She said two or three in the beginning, depending where we want to be at.
I think, from what I understood, it would just be in that, the one cooler with three doors.
Okay.
Eric, do you need to help us?
Well, it looks like the photo was off of the.
Yeah. But is, wasn't that your understanding?
It's the one west of the cashier counter.
Yeah. It would be the, it'd be the one cooler that has three door panels in it, right?
And if we can also say that they only sell, they don't sell the singles, like the big ones that the people buy and drink out of the paper bag?
Yeah.
That has to be a six-pack or larger?
Without being too intrusive, Glenna, would that be a reasonable condition? I know we've stayed away from the volume and trying to control volume by like singles or tall boys or whatever.
And I'll be honest with you, I'll, I need to beef up on the state law because I'm not as familiar with it as I should be, but I do think that the state law prohibits the board and the city from dictating what size they sell. And so I don't think that we can any longer say you can't sell like a shot-type bottle. I think, though, that you can limit it to one cooler, and I think you can also limit the hours of operation of the business, not of the alcohol sales, but of the business.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
By 10:00 p.m., you got most of the, most of the good people are home, and they don't need to be out buying beer.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would there be a motion one way or the other?
I vote that we go with staff recommendation. Change number one to say, to eliminate the wine and just say this is for the beer only. And to add into, I don't know if it needs to be a separate item or added to that, that's be limited to, we call it one cooler with three doors, or one cooler?
Yeah, just one cooler.
To one cooler's worth out there.
As presented or illustrated by the applicant.
Yeah.
And you could even qualify it to say the one west of the counter?
One west of the cashier's counter.
Yep.
Yeah.
And hours are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for operation? And that's okay with her?
That's what she had said before. And I just think, you know, for doing this, it's just a, bring in a tax-paying member to the city and bring in some growth. And it's a grocery store, not a bar, so.
Okay, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Opposed. One, two. All right. So motion carries five to for approval. Okay. Okay. All right. Keep improving that neighborhood. You've got some good neighbors, and we wanna keep them down there, too. So hopefully you can help do that. Thank you. All right. That'll bring us to item number 12.
Which was moved to consent.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Mr. Chair members of the board, this is a request to, square with the table, but not with the camera. Okay. This is a request to waive the provision that requires that the principal use, that when fireworks is a use of the property, it needs to be the principal use of the property, principal permitted use. The way it's written in the regulations, if you look at your applicable requirements on page 43, it's highlighted or bolded where it says shall be permitted only as a principal permitted use, not as an accessory use. What's being requested for this location, which is on East Ovid, which is a block south of Euclid, just west of Interstate 235, the interchange with Euclid. So it's on a dead-end situation here. They are proposing within the site to have a vendor tent right out. It would be outside the front yard setback, but it would be over the paved area of the one side of the parking area. They would also have a container, I believe. I don't see that shown on here. Oh, I'm sorry, the storage container's up here for the inventory that they would need to secure when it wasn't, wasn't open for business. And there does, there, under the fire code, I should point out that the, there is the requirement that the tent be separated a certain distance from where they're storing the fireworks. So I think that's their, what they're trying to demonstrate there, that their storage is far enough away that it's not a safety issue with regard to people that would be frequenting the tent. Because the tents, if the tent's something that the fire department does regulate, then they have to get a tent permit through the fire department. And you can't have a certain amount of combustible material next to the tent or fireworks, I should say. They're probably even classified higher than that. So staff is taking kind of a simple look at this. I'll show you a couple of photos, too, to get a feel for the premise. This is right off the end of East Ovid.
Could you describe the principal accessory?
Principal permitted use is a paintball amusement business.
Can you just describe what those two terms mean a little bit more?
So a principal permitted use would be the primary use of the property.
And so is the intent of the statute or this regulation to say you can only sell it if your store mostly sells fireworks?
Eric, I would like to answer that question. I helped draft the ordinance with our city attorney, and it has been litigated. And yes, the intent, I hope I heard your question right, and the intent is that the principal use on the property should be fireworks sales. It should not be allowed as an accessory use.
So like if it's a grocery store, they wouldn't be allowed to sell?
Right.
Or anything else?
So basically, kind of this pop-up scenario would only, could only occur if it was the only primary use of, is the only use of the property, really, not accessory to something that's more permanent.
But in what situations will that come up? You can only sell it for like a couple of weeks?
I actually just drove past one last night. I think it might've been in Johnston, rather than Des Moines, but it's on Northwest Beaver, and it's a fireworks store. I mean, the entire, it looks like any other type of commercial store, like a fireplace store or something, and it's dedicated to fireworks. So that would be.
Is it pop-up or permanent?
It's permanent. It's in the building, the building's signage.
But the pop-up situation would have to be popped up on a vacant, a vacant site?
Paved surface, yeah.
Okay. I just, I guess I don't understand the rationale behind that, but no, I understand the content.
Yes.
Right. And fireworks sales are allowed year-round, it's just the use of them, is that correct? In Iowa?
I think they're limited to certain dates for when they can sell.
I think they are, too.
Sales are limited to certain dates?
Like the month before July 4.
All right. So if you have a permanent building and that's the primary use, and I said, "Yep, I got a fireworks store," I could still only sell during certain dates of the year?
Right. I believe that's correct. I will actually try to see if I can find that and answer that question, and you're out of the hearing.
So, and to further answer Nathan's question, the building itself that's on the premise is, is an amusement business for, they're called ICU paintball. So it's an inside paintball course range. I don't know how you wanna call it. This is just a little bit looking further northwest. We didn't get any response cards. Staff is looking at this purely at the criteria for variance, and we believe there's a viable use of the property already with the principal use of the property. So we don't think that denying or not allowing this would deprive the property of all beneficial use or reasonable use. So in this instance, we weren't able to find that we could recommend approval of a variance.
Clear enough? Okay. Any other questions for Eric? Your radius map didn't have, have comments from anybody?
No. But I did hand out the letter that was directly addressed.
From the applicant?
To the commission, or to the board.
To the board. Okay? All right. Let's go ahead and hear from the applicant.
I'm guessing I'm the lucky one that gets to have the most controversial one today. So. My name's Jonathan Eady. I live in Johnston. I'm a home builder, but I am asked to represent for actually this one and the next one you're looking at. I think I heard her correctly that I need to speak on just one. And then just repeat everything the second time. Okay. So this is the one that is ICU paintball. I'm gonna address the issues that they sent me on the staff recommendations. the issues that they sent me on the staff recommendations, uh, but in order to do that, got to give you just a tiny bit of history, and I'll go very quickly here, so, uh, when fireworks first came out, we worked with a, a family, my wife and I with another family, and put up a large tent in the Grimes area, uh, at that particular year, Grimes was the most open area, and you probably have seen that there are eight or 10 of them that have all popped up on that road because of it, um, had a good year, people liked us, and so we considered trying to expand and stuff, and enjoyed what we were doing, um, I live on Craigslist, and I'm constantly looking for property that I can personally build a home on, was in the real estate section, and this pertains to the next one, but it's important to this, uh, Farm and City Supply had put an ad out there saying that they were interested in selling fireworks off of their property because they are an M1 property, so I responded to that, wanted to see what they were wanting to do and everything, and then I did the research on it, I, I can answer a lot of the questions that were brought up and asking about the city, I mean, the 75-foot rules, you've got a 20-foot rule on storage containers, uh, you've got to have access points, four-foot widths on the drive, so many exits, I mean, I've really studied up on all of this stuff, get along very well with all of the, uh, fire marshals, I, I've met with Grimes Fire Marshal, I've met with their city, uh, city department, I've met with the state, uh, marshals when they come through, and then I've met with the Des Moines Fire Departments as we've gone through with this, uh, we don't do anything at a minimum, so, you know, if a minimum is eight-foot table, or a maximum of eight-foot tables that are in there in order to keep it safe for fireworks, we're doing six-foot tables with bigger gaps between them, and things like that, so, uh, we're not trying to just step in there, do something quickly and get it done, so, after checking that out, ICU came into it because I was researching all the M1 properties to figure out where in Des Moines would be allowed, uh, and there aren't, I mean, realistically, and it was, I understand the ordinance was written that way, the city of Des Moines, at least the council would prefer in general to not have fireworks sold here, um, but they did set their stipulations, M1 properties, and then there is that line about primary use and accessory use, our take on that from reading it is that the primary use of that property needed to be retail sales, uh, when we were reading that from the beginning, that was just our take, okay, and so it was like, you don't want a concrete plant who happens to be an M1 property setting up a tent or something like there and selling fireworks because that's not what's usually there, and you're, you don't have your fire hydrants maybe in place, or the safety features and all that, so we understood that, and only looked for those kinds of properties. Once we, uh, came up with that, I contacted ICU Paintball, the one we're talking about now, and Todd Billings said, yes, I've been trying to figure out how to do fireworks here, we've got this property, we pay the taxes for it, and this is another income source for us, uh, he's not just a recreational place, he does actually have a retail store inside of it, sells paintballs, sells, sells paintball guns and everything, I do understand it's reduced down a little bit because, uh, the internet has kind of taken away from some of the sales and everything, but he has been selling retail at that site, my understanding for the entire time that he's been there, so, uh, then what happened is my friends decided that they prefer to go on their own in Grimes, no longer needed our help, they weren't interested in doing fireworks in Des Moines, on the east side or the south side, because in their opinion, they're a little bit rougher areas to deal with.
Hey, now watch what you're talking about.
I know, I know, and I'm just, I'm trying to, I have a good positive side to this, so, but that'll tell you if we are. So, they went through and, I was concerned with theirs, and they didn't want to do it, and I told these people, and then at that point, I was no longer involved with fireworks, so, these guys asked if I would help them, uh, I pretty much did all the administrative stuff for the one that went into Grimes, in the case, I can't remember who it was, I believe it was the attorney, the city legal, mentioned that there is one in Des Moines that is a full building, it's actually called the Sailorville Events Center, it's run by Mark and Bradley, um, Mark and Carolyn Bradley, they were my friends that I had set up the original tent for, uh, the problem with that location is it's not a primary use for fireworks, there can't be a primary use for fireworks in here because fireworks can only be sold in tents for about three to four weeks out of the year, and even if you have a building that only adds an additional two to three weeks, which is in January, which nobody's buying fireworks in January, in Iowa, we're too cold just staying indoors and stuff, so that is now the Iowa Events Center, and they actually do craft shows and potlucks, and rent that building out the other 11 months out of the year.
That's also in another city, that's not in Des Moines.
That, that I think technically follows under Polk County, but, uh, that was an example, the reason I bring that up is...
Not under ours.
Okay, so, but the reason I brought that up was more of a point that even they could not sustain a building on a piece of land just for fireworks sales, uh, that was really the point that I was trying to get at, so, um, so, we went, and we didn't just go out and start buying stuff and getting their certificate and all that, first thing we did is I had each owner, Jared Koenig from Pharma City Supply, and Todd Billings from ICU Paintball, and I had them call the zoning department, uh, because this is something new, it was new to the state, and I didn't want to start putting all this work into it and immediately be told we couldn't do it and waste a lot of people's time, so on March 20th, I wrote it all down, but I believe it was March 20th of 2017, Todd Billings called, spoke with Brian Davis down in the zoning department, they went tho- through these exact items, uh, and, and I'm not trying to pick on anything, okay, I, I, I try really hard, I'm a builder, I get along with all the supervisors and inspectors, so I'm not doing this, it's just the steps we went through, uh, went through, and Brian Davis read through that, and says, yes, you're M1, I've read through these, it appears to me that you should be fine on selling fireworks on that, so we took that as, okay, we need to start doing a preparation, see if we can get through the certification process and all that, I had each owner do that, um, the 23rd, I believe, is when, uh, like three days later, that, uh, Pharma City Supply called, got the same answer from them, he even emailed the two, the, the, it's like a three-line section where it talks about primary use, secondary use, and all of that stuff, so, we felt comfortable going through that, went and spent between $30,000 and $40,000, bought tables, tents, uh, again, it's not a fly-by-night thing, I, I live in the area, I want to take care of things and take care of people right, and so, got it all set up, had all the product ordered, and, uh, went for our tent permit here, and that's when we were notified by Sue Donovan that we would not be allowed to have the tent because we weren't allowed to sell fireworks there, kind of freaked me out at the moment as well as the others, because we've been planning on all of this, uh, tried to talk with her, was not interested on that, a city council member, and I don't know the council, so I won't say who it was or anything, but one of them I know went and spoke on our behalf, and they came up with a solution where we could file an appeal with you guys, uh, they would not uphold the ordinance during that appeal process, we could go ahead and sell our fireworks, and then at the end of it, we could cancel the appeal, get our fees back, and everything was taken care of, and that was a way for us to recuperate some of our costs, so I was very thankful for that, uh, we ran through, had tents at both locations, I am not aware of any complaints, we kept it neat, we kept it, uh, we were in the news several times, uh, talking about safety issues, we talked about areas where you're allowed to shoot, uh, we keep sheets at each location that specifically says, Des Moines doesn't allow it, this town does, but only between these hours, and, and kind of kept that so we could go through with people and tell them what they are and are not allowed to do, um, we are also looking for safer, safer ways, so, there are some people that come through that have never shot fireworks before, we teach them safer ways to do that, uh, so that there aren't injuries and it's not affecting neighbors, um, I know there are concerns about dogs, I run the dog rescue, um, I'm, I'm very much concerned with that too, and so we try to educate people on how to deal with that, handle that, and be responsible neighbors and everything, um, but what it really comes down to is the ordinance itself, I don't understand it, um, there, the points that there were made were accessory use first primary use, I can't find any place where it would be a primary use where you're only selling one month out of the year, um, so, if we can't have primary use in the city of Des Moines, at that point, you've basically said it's illegal to sell in the city of Des Moines, and I'm pretty sure, not being a lawyer or anything, but I'm pretty sure that goes against the intention of the state law that was written, um, so I, I've got some confusion on that, um, and then the second thing that was on here was...
Your time's starting to tick down.
I'll go real fast, two last things, so the, the second one was mentioning that this was a, a situation of my own doing, as far, as far as a financial hardship, I just want to point out, we've tried to talk with zoning before these decisions were made, um, so that we could prevent those kinds of problems, because there is a lot of expense that gets involved with that, and if there was no way to be done, then we would look somewhere else, uh, the final one, the final point I'll just put out on there is, uh, there was something to the effect that this does not meet the integrity of the area, or the essence of the area, as far as having a fireworks tent set up there and everything, um, I don't know what they mean by that, I, and my wife and I joke about this, but both locations happen to be within two blocks of the Romantics erotic, adult erotic building center, uh, as well as Bales' Bondsmans and bars, I don't know how we'd be taking away from the integrity of the area or anything like that, um, it just, it was good locations, the people enjoyed being there, enjoyed what we sold, and, and I'd like to be able to continue doing that with these two businesses.
All right, questions for Jonathan?
The, the timeline you gave, is that from this year or last year?
I started two years ago
Okay.
On this, and so what the city did is, they basically said, file a motion, which I did last year, pay the fees, and we won't enforce it, so you go ahead and sell your fireworks, and then when it's done, cancel that motion and get your money back.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I started back again after that, in October, I skipped a step, in October, I tried to get ahold of Sue Donovan again, I emailed her, thanked her for her help, I said, I would like to find a way to make this permanent and allowed, what do I need to do, I didn't get a response, I followed up a week later, copied it, didn't get a response, then you had the holidays, and things come up, and we've had family issues and stuff dealing with, so then I decided, well, I'll just do the tent permit again, because that's what triggered it, tent, it actually took a month before they got a response, we found out a day before I had to file everything in order to make this meeting, uh, so we got everything kind of thrown and put together here, and, and that's why I'm here.
I, I would just like to clarify for the board, um, I think, rather than not enforcing the ordinance, what happens if someone appeals, um, makes an appeal to the board and then appeals that, um, is that, uh, we stay proceedings during the appeal period, so, it's not that we're not enforcing the ordinance.
I may not, I may not be saying it correct.
Right, we're saying the same thing, just different ways.
They, they found a solution that I was appreciative of, and, and that's what it comes down to.
But even if that was your quote solution, or that's how you took it to be, it was still a, a temporary thing to fix for that year.
The ordinance has been in place now almost two years, correct?
Correct.
So by now, you should kind of know how to walk, talk, chew gum on the ordinance, shouldn't you?
I, I agree, except I agree on the interpret, I disagree on the interpretation of that ordinance.
That it, that it must be the principal permitted use of the property?
Yeah.
What's unclear about that?
To, to me, it was retail, I, that, when we're reading that, and I, I guess, going to the zoning department first, and talking that, and even stating that while we're there, saying, this is how I'm reading it, and having a zoning enforcement officer agree with me, that's, I guess, where my concern is.
Unfortunately, it sounds like Brian should have checked with his boss before giving that determination.
That very well could be.
But that was also two years ago, when Brian's, the, when Brian and you discussed this, yeah, yeah, so I'm, I would hope that that smoke has cleared, not to make a pun on purpose.
No, and I'm, I'm not upset with anybody, I'm trying to find the correct way to do this, to see, uh...
If I was in your shoes, I would look for an M1 property in Des Moines that doesn't have anything on it.
But then...
And I would go apply for my tent permit, right?
Except that they've, city of law has provided, provided it's that only people that can do that would end up being transient merchants, and they'll require you for all tents to come down in order to do that, so they've already made it, so that is not allowed.
All tents would have to come down, like every night, transient merchant?
Every single night the tent has to come down and all that, you put up a 2,400 square foot tent.
Yep, and that's what a transient merchant's supposed to do, right.
Exactly, except they make exemptions for Christmas trees, and rugs, and fruit and vegetables.
Gotcha, so from a testimony perspective, in my long-winded preamble, I always say, if you disagree with the ordinance, you can petition to change that ordinance in the future.
Okay.
So, whether someone agrees or not with the intent of the ordinance, or what it does to encourage or discourage sales, all we have to look at in front of us is the ordinance.
Okay.
And that's the only authority this board has today.
Okay.
So, um, so, so based on that, we, we, we just have to look at the staff, staff recommendation, and compare that to the criteria, uh, your testimony, and what the appeals are that you have in front of us, so that's all we can do today.
Okay.
Um, so, any other questions for Jonathan? Okay, you can sit down for a minute, we'll check back with you, all right, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, any further questions for staff?
Wanted to mention that I did find what Nathan was asking about regarding the timeframe, so the state code, um, chapter 100 from the 2019 Iowa code, um, I don't have the exact section number here, I can get it if you would like, but, anyway, it does, it does have timeframes, one is for a permanent building, and one is for a temporary structure, and the timeframes are the same, June 1st to July 8, and December 10 to January 3rd for a permanent building, temporary is only June 13 to July 8, so I misspelled there, the same, temporary, you, you miss out on the December 10 to January 3.
Okay. Okay, all right, um, so, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation, if I didn't already.
So, Mel, or Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Help me with the, the understanding of this, so, the ordinance says you cannot sell fireworks, um, in an M1 with a permanent structure already in place, meaning that if there's a building there doing business, you can't put a tent out in front of it, is that correct?
Yeah.
So what he's wanting to do, he's asking for a variance from us to be able to put a tent in an M1 district with the building already on there, but if there was a vacant lot in an M1 district, then he wouldn't have to ask for the variance, is that correct?
Would, because he needs to...
He may not need to ask for the variance if the lot was empty, but he could only sell as a transient merchant, but if the building is empty in an M1, he could come in and fill it and sell during those times, because he's the primary sales, so we need to find an empty building in an M1.
Got you.
Or he could go on, as you said, he could go on a vacant lot.
Vacant lot with a tent.
Right, I, I don't, uh, I trust him that the transient merchant requirements would apply, I'm not confident one way or the other, but I will take his word for it, but in terms of coming to the board, he would not need to do that on a vacant lot.
So let me ask you, is why, you can't ask for a conditional use permit? Is that different than a variance?
There's no jurisdiction for conditional use permits, is there in this regard?
No, we, under our current code, um, fireworks sales do not qualify for a conditional use permit.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, it's a great question.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Can I ask anything else, or?
No, you're, you're, you're kind of done for now, Jonathan, but...
Although you can probably ask the next one if you're coming up next, right?
Yeah, 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 hold, hold that thought, yeah.
So I, I guess, I mean, I don't know, um, you know, the, the wisdom of the ordinance and how realistic it is to comply with it, that might be, I don't know, if someone could challenge it or, or whatever, but I think it's pretty clear that since the ordinance is in place as it is, I mean, the city's recommendation is right, like, there's no, there's, I, I can't ima- I don't, I don't hear the argument even really that they've met the variance test because there's an ongoing business that runs there 11 months out of the year, right, so, it, and I think it'd be very hard to make the argument that without this variance being granted, they couldn't have a reasonable rate of return and be able to use the, the property, so, I'm going to be going along with staff recommendation.
I just think it's pretty clear that, and, and I will say, I'm not a fireworks proponent at all, I don't really particularly like them, but that's just my own personal thing, but the state, when the state representatives pass this, it's really, then it really becomes an encumbrance on cities to decide how to manage it, and it's obvious to me that Des Moines doesn't want the sales, according to the ordinance, because it's a little bit hand-tieing.
I agree with you on that, Cindy, um, because I'm not a big fan of, of fireworks either, because they seem to love to throw them off all the time near my house, being one of those roughside, eastiders, um, but, there is a law, and, and I don't see the law the way it's written and currently being interpreted as being any way that could be, um, any way to make money, uh, to hold a property for 11 months and only... to hold a property for 11 months and only use it one month out of the year, does not sound like a sound business practice. And I think his interpretation that it is his primary use of being retail, and the comments he made about that you have the adequate fire, you have the adequate escape routes and everything else, and I did happen to visit one of their tents last year as part of the dog rescue, but I, I know it was very safe, there was kids there, and I felt very confident the way it was being run. You know, I, I don't like them personally, but there's, there's a great need and a demand for them, and I, I do think his interpretation of primary use being retail, and he's got a lot of space in where he's doing these, I, I have a tendency to want to approve his, his, the variance, for those reasons.
Okay. Unless there's any other comments, would there be a motion then? Is that your motion? Did you make an official motion?
Okay, I'll make an official motion.
Yeah, yeah, because you said, "I want to," so make that official.
I, I, I will make a motion that we allow the variance for the sale of fireworks at the location at, listed on here, 2220 East Ovid Avenue, with the understanding that he still needs to get his tent and vendor, his tent permit, vendor license, and state regulations.
And since this needs to meet a variance test, can you give some general reasoning for your...
The variance test is, there is, it, it's not...
Not to put you on the spot, but...
Not, I'm trying to think of the word. It's not a, you don't get a return on your investment or money. It's, it's not financially feasible to hold a lot for 12 months and only use it for one month. Because then you also have a vacant lot for 11 months you have to maintain, and worry about, you know, homeless people deciding to camp up there and everything else. It's not a good business practice. So, does that...
She's writing away over here.
Okay. So I, I just say, it's, 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 it's not feasible income-wise to own a property, to use it for one month a year, and not have another business on it, and there are other safeguards in place.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, that, no one's going to second me? Gosh.
Well, we'll...
Although I, I tend to agree with her, I, I still think that it needs to go back and, the ordinance needs to be looked at or reviewed. And I, we don't have jurisdiction to do that, and it, it doesn't meet the test of variance the way it's all put together. It's a real difficult one.
Okay. So is there a second? I'll say going once, going twice, see if the motion stays alive. All right, seeing no se- second, the motion dies, is there any other motion on the table?
I'll move staff recommendation to deny the variance.
I'll second.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second to deny, to deny the variance. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed, two opposed. Okay, so motion carries five to two for denial of the variance. Okay, that'll bring us to then item 14. Jonathan, you can be, you'll be back up here in a second. We'll let staff present. 1825 East Army Post Road, a variance request.
We did get, I think I put this in the wrong file. I want to defer to City Legal. There was a card in this file, that's for the last item, that was from the Fairmont Park neighborhood.
And it was in opposition?
Yes.
And it was denied?
Right. But I didn't admit that into the record with that item, so I didn't know.
That was probably that lady who said she sent her.
Well, I think that at this point, Eric, the hearing is closed.
Okay.
And it, the, the applicant wasn't affected positively or negatively by that item, and so I think that we need to just keep it in the file or return it to the person that sent it.
It was received, yeah, okay.
Apologize for that, that was probably my...
It happens.
...misfiling there.
They all look the same.
We did get another letter specific to this site, and we did get a card.
For the current item now, item 14, okay? All right.
This is a property just east of...
Pretty good.
You know, relatively just east of, I should say. I mean, it's, the lot sizes are bigger, but it's not that far east of Southeast 14th and East Army Post Road. But the scale of development there is large, so it is actually quite a distance, when you think about it. But this was zoned M1 with limited M1, and you can read the limitations that were placed in the, that were placed in the, on the property with the zoning conditions. Nothing about this request violates those conditions directly. So what's being requested here, in addition to the fleet and farm, sales and display component of the property, and the warehousing and distribution component of the property, they are requesting to have a tent out in the front of this, in the area that's allowed for display by the zoning. This is a much larger site, so this, even though the tent size is shown the same, and the storage is the same, they look much smaller in the context than they did on the last situation. This is a photo looking at the building from Army Post, East Army Post Road, looking south. I'll just kind of move towards the west, looking south into the property. There are some existing containers that are on the property. I haven't done any research directly into whether those are, I don't believe they're allowed. I, I think they're something that we do have to look at from a zoning perspective, because we don't allow containers as a method of storage. So that was noticed when we did visit the site, and that's being referred to the zoning enforcement staff for, for determination.
Eric, what's the surroundings? I, I missed, where's exactly on Army Post?
So, just to the north is what used, I think is, what used to be budget storage. There's a credit union a little further to the west.
So it's down by that Casey's, kind of?
The Casey's is further east, Indianola. So this is in that section of East Army Post Road between Southeast 14th and Indianola.
Okay.
In that area.
Slumberland and Trans Iowa would be just to the west, Northside.
This used to be Payless Cashways.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Long ago.
Gotcha. Thank you.
They are requesting to appeal the same provision in chapter 134, section 1281, which also, and again, I've bolded in the applicable, the provision that's in play here. They're wanting waiver of that provision, which prohibits the use as anything but a principal use of the property in M1, to allow the sale of consumer fireworks as presented. Again, staff believes that the property in itself, and I think I should qualify, when you're looking at the variance criteria, the variance criteria are applicable to the, the land in question, not the land that you looked at somewhere else that wouldn't accommodate you under the code. So I think there was a little confusion there about, well, you can only make, it wouldn't be viable for three months out of the year. Well, this property's viable 12 months out of a year with the use that's already on the property, so, and that's the property in question. So when the staff looked at the, the criteria for variance, we didn't believe it was met, because there's an, there's already a principal permitted use that is yielding a reasonable return on the property, and that denying the fireworks would not deprive it of that. So that's the, the angle staff is taking. And again, that's pertaining to the land in question, not other alternatives that were looked at.
So what's in there now that you said, what's the principal use then?
There's, there's the, it's the same business operator. They're doing two activities. They're warehousing and distributing for fulfillment of, they deliver to places like Van Walls.
So it's not vacant?
No, no, it's, it's completely, in fact, I think they're looking to expand further. They've been in to see us about another expansion of their site, because they also own the property to the east as well.
I think there is a store there too, isn't there?
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's the Farm and Fleet, retail and display in the front as well. So staff is, again, looking at that variance criteria, which again is, is directed at the property in question, not the opportunity for where it might be somewhere else. We believe that it does not meet the variance criteria, and therefore should be denied. And this is the consent card that was received, was the same owner as the property owner. And then we did have the communication that came along with the original application.
All right, any questions for Eric? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Jonathan? You've got the floor again. It's a different item, you can have up to 10 minutes.
Pretty much all the same things. So the only thing I guess I didn't mention on the last one was, in both of these cases, the licensing is with the principal business that is there. It is not me being licensed. They're licensed, insured, and all that. So as far as being a transient merchant, it's not somebody coming from in, out of town, or that is not normally in that site, which is why I was saying it was not a transient merchant situation. I don't see any def, again, not being an attorney, but I don't see any definition where you would own the land, have a building, sell retail product, and because you put a tent up front, it makes you transient, because you're already there. But I don't, you know, it's not me. So that's pretty much it. So we were well accepted there, and just looking for a way to get there again.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jonathan. Okay, anybody here to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. So, and I understand that the variance goes with the land and not the business. Where could you sell fireworks and have it be economically feasible, if it's going to be the only business running out of that thing? I mean, because we look at economic hardship otherwise.
If you made that the main use of the property.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But is that economically feasible?
Well, at that time, the question would be raised, right? Is it economically feasible?
So it's not. So I think we're, we're doing everything we can to not allow people to sell fireworks.
Someone could have...
The criteria is not whether the fireworks sales would be economically feasible. The criteria is, does the land able to re, yield a reasonable return? Doesn't necessarily have to be with fireworks sales. It could be from any use permitted in the zoning.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just frustrated, but...
There are, there are five area loc, I'm just looking, because I drove past this literally last night, so I knew there are some in the area. There are at least five, if not six, locations in Des Moines, or into the Des Moines area that appear to be stores related solely to fireworks. One of them is called Blazing Glory Fireworks, Iowa's first fireworks retailers, hosting five area locations in the area, and then a different one is called Jake's Fireworks. So I think that it is, it is definitely an option that some people are choosing to undertake. But with that said, I have to second what Eric said and mentioned earlier. The variance requirements are subject to this site, and, you know, is there a financial hardship on this site? Is there any reasonable return from this site? And so that is the criteria for the board to determine.
That's what, that's what I was talking about, why, you know, why, why have to ask for a variance? They can't ask for a conditional use permit, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's just...
It's the only route they can go, so that kind of...
I think you made a great point.
If there's an empty building in an M1 district, you could probably do it.
And you would lose your pants.
Yeah, maybe, or maybe there's a seasonal, like you come in and rent it, get the permits, and then...
But that's not the primary use. If you're renting it out, you're, that's not the primary use.
No, you are, and you'd be the one, and then at a different time, in a seasonal tenant, could, could do it a different time of year.
Anyway.
But that's not, I mean, then change the ordinance if that's what you want, something else to do.
That's discussion for another day.
Yes. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and close public portion and go to board deliberation then.
I'll move staff recommendation and deny all the variance.
My second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion for denial, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, yes, all right. Consistent all the way around, so, yes, five, two. So Jonathan, we appreciate everything you've done to spend your time here this afternoon. I wish you well in your business ventures. Okay.
Can I do a person shout out for his...
Item 15, an exception request at 240 East Livingston Avenue.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item number 15 is a proposal to divide an existing 80-foot wide parcel into two 40-foot wide parcels. It was originally plotted as two 40-foot wide lots that have since been combined. As you can see from this aerial, the surrounding area was all plotted as 40-foot wide lots. Maybe a third of them have been combined. So if you look, just down the street, you have 40, 40, looks like maybe another 80, then a 40, 40, 80, 40, 80. So it's kind of a hodgepodge of 40-foot and 80-foot wide lots in the area. I'd point out that the property backs up to the Beachy Flats, multifamily residential development, which also has an outlet to Southeast 3rd Street, just to the east of the subject property. The applicant is proposing to divide it into two 40-foot wide lots, and to put a single-family house that's generally 30 feet wide by 40 feet deep on each of the parcels. So they would also need exceptions to the side yard setbacks. They're required to provide seven feet minimum on one side, 15 feet total, and they're proposing five feet on each side, so 10 feet of site setback total. As you can see from the sketch, their proposal would be to have garages on the back that would be accessed from the existing alley that's to the north. Here's the drawing that they've submitted for the proposal. I believe this is what would face East Livingston Street. This appears to be a garage, but the applicant indicated that the only garage would be on the back facing the alley. So I'm not really sure what this opening is. The main floor, or the main entrance, would be up these stairs, and then on the side of the, of the dwelling. So it's also an exception that they've requested to have the door not face the street. Here is a photo of the property. It does have an existing single-family house that would be torn down to make way for a new house in that location, and then also in the open space area to the west of the house. And then this is just a photo that shows, it's kind of a street view, that shows the subject property here with the open space in between. And this is just looking down East Livingston Street. And then here is the consent map. We did get three cards back, all in opposition. So since they were only exception appeals, we only notified the adjoining properties. Staff looked at this, and we did feel that it was reasonable to allow them to have the two 40-foot wide lots. This area was originally plotted as 40-foot wide lots. You'll see, you know, there's still a significant number of properties in the area that are 40-foot wide lots. So we didn't feel that the lot widths were not compatible with the property or with the neighborhood. However, we don't believe that the design proposed by the applicant is appropriate whatsoever. You know, this is more of a bungalow and cottage neighborhood, more than this contemporary architecture. We do feel that contemporary architecture could be acceptable if it was done right with roof pitches and with maybe front porches or other design elements that, you know, complement or are more compatible with the surrounding properties than this. So with that said, I'll go through the list of conditions that staff is recommending. So number, first off, we have recommended denial of the exception of the design guidelines that requires a front door to face the street. And we do feel that having a front door facing the street is an important element that any house should have. So the first condition, um, we've recommended is that any dwelling shall be constructed of a design and with building materials that are compatible with the architecture of the existing dwellings in the area to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. And I just noted that contemporary and/or traditional architecture can be found compatible. So we do want to leave the designer some flexibility, but ultimately we've recommended that it be left up to the city's planning administrator to make the final call on character. Uh, number two, any metal siding shall consist of architectural quality products to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. Number three, it really goes with number, the recommended condition number seven, which I'll jump to number seven, I guess. Number seven is that we recommend any dwelling have a full-depth basement. And I believe the applicant may try to make an argument that the water table in this area wouldn't support a full-depth basement, but at this time, staff still thinks without having evidence, we feel it's appropriate to have a full-depth basement. And that would lead to the condition number three, which says concrete or masonry shall be used for the exterior of any portion of the building that is within two feet of grade to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. This is really, um, because when, you know, you have your lawnmower out, you may run into the bottom of your house, and if it's siding or metal, you could dent it, and so over time, it's going to look ratty fairly quickly. So if it was a full-depth basement, there would be probably two feet or so of exposed concrete that's a more durable material, won't be subject to the nicks and dents that the siding would be. So number four, any dwelling shall have a ground floor entry feature with a front door facing the street to the satisfaction of planning administrator. Number five, any dwelling constructed shall have ground floor living space with windows to, I guess, windows to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. Because as you can see on this design that they're proposing, this shows the main entrance on the second floor, which we didn't feel was appropriate for this area. Number six, provision of a garage that at a minimum is large enough to provide one parking space and at least eighty feet of storage. And what else is it, vehicular access shall be limited to the alley only. Number seven is the full basements. Number eight, any construction shall be in accordance with the building code with necessary permits. And then number nine, any modified lot configuration shall be in accordance with the plat- approved by the Permit Development Center and recorded with Polk County. Any questions?
Do you know how many of the surrounding houses have full basements?
I don't know up hand. I'm guessing most of them have some sort of cellar for basement underneath, but I saw Jim Post is here, he's a, he lives just a few houses down. He would probably be able to answer that question.
Any other questions for Bert? Okay, thank you for your introduction on this one. All right, applicant. I know you've been waiting a long time, so. Right, you're up.
Michael Donlin with Anchor Investment Group, six forty, Forty-Eighth Street is my address. So, speak up? Yeah, sure. So we are proposing building two single-family houses on this lot, dividing it into forty-foot lots. Um, we're, we're totally fine with staff's recommendations. We do, we also feel it's appropriate to do a front door. That rendering was before we talked to the, the city planning. And so I'll actually show you a rendering of what they proposed.
Okay.
Sorry, it's a little small. So these are the couple designs that they proposed. This is more, the bottom is more of the single-family proposal, and then the top's more of a rowhouse proposal. Obviously, we'll be doing more of a single-family design. So we don't have any problem working with the city planners to, to meet their design criteria. You know, we're trying to help the city's revitalization plan in this neighborhood, and so that's one of the reasons why we're splitting this lot and building two single-family houses on it. In addition, uh, the only provision from staff recommendation that we would like to take out of here would be the full basement. It does have a high water table in this neighborhood in addition to cost. It adds more cost, and so if we can put an extra five or six thousand dollars into the siding or the kitchen, we'd rather do that than put it into a basement that inevitably will have problems and, and just seems to make a lot more sense in, in an urban environment like this to, to not do that, so. Any questions?
Just to clarify, you're fine with all the other restrictions?
Yeah, I mean.
Conditions?
We had planned on working with the city, city planning division in regards to a lot of this anyways. So it's, really doesn't affect what we're trying to accomplish either way.
Do you have any plans that would be a little more traditional? I mean, that's, that's a nice, like, kind of rowhouse look, that single-family house, but that'd be more like the bungalow look or the one and a half-story style? Do you have anything like that in mind that would fit in the neighborhood more?
Yeah, we, so we've done a lot of research and, and there's a lot of different urban type designs. So you do have, I'll, I'll just put a couple of examples. You know, your more contemporary designs like this. You've got, um, I'm not in love with exactly with the way that they've done this, but there's more of a bungalow. Since we have small lots, we're going to have to do a two-story in order to fit the square foot, so we really can't do a one-story bungalow, but we can do something that's a, an urban-inspired bungalow type feel. I really like that design as well without the garage, so you can imagine it. I'll cover that up.
Is, is there a reason with what you showed on your phone, and that was like for two narrow lots, which I thought was a very good potential example, but could you do that and then apply a peaked roof?
We could, we could.
To the design?
Yeah, so we, we intend to have, to give the city planners two designs, one of which is more contemporary and, and obviously working with the neighborhood as well, and then one that's a bit more traditional with, with, we, we would call it more of an urban cottage. So it's got some, some more modern features, but because, you know, we don't want to emulate exactly what's there and compete with this new old type cottage feel, but there's, there's a way to, to make that mix work well.
All right, thank you. Everyone good? Okay, all right. We'll check back with you in a few minutes, thank you. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Come on down.
Jim Post, two two four East Livingston, three houses away. I'm the neighborhood leader, I'm also a neighbor of this. One thing that I thought staff was going to mention is that we are in a part, in a pilot program for some incentives. And when you look at, this is a rough draft from like a month ago.
Put it on top of the picture there, Jim, yeah, there you go.
I mean, what they're looking at, and obviously it's not okayed yet. It has to council approval and budget, whatever, but they're looking at sixty-two thousand dollars for participating properties. So I think the houses, while the one on his property might be a, a dozen rebuild, I think there's others that may or may not be, and maybe the, the homes need to look more like the neighborhood. I really don't know, I'm actually missing the committee meeting that's probably rolling out the final draft. So I don't know where that's headed. It, it doesn't have city council approval yet, and I, and I don't think it's safe to say it's not budgeted. But I, I mean, I, I think it is coming. There's four pilot programs for it, and I think Mel probably knows a little bit about it, at least the programs. You know, the forty-foot lots, uh, on a personal level, I think by the time you get front yard setbacks and a thirty, forty-foot deep house and a garage, I mean, there's not a lot of room left for spot to run around the yard or Fido. There's not a lot left for a swing set, a kiddie pool to play catch with your kids. There's a lot going on there. But I, I would say that the items that they included at the end, I, I think that's a pretty good indication that this, the city's really, this committee is really looking at that, those items in this area, so. I mean, as incentives, whatever, so. To answer your question, I, I actually fifteen, thirteen years ago had an addition. My original house has a duck under all of the pipes and stuff, so it's five and a half, six foot. It very seldom ever gets wet. My new addition is a full-size basement. It's typical spring sump pump kicks on, runs a couple months. I, I mean, I don't know how to answer that. When the river level hits twenty-four feet, three days later it comes on, and when the river level gets back to twenty-three feet, it shuts off, so. You know, there's years that it doesn't run at all, there's years it runs two or three days, there's, I mean, I think, I, I guess I don't want to say what full basement, but, I mean, there, I think most of the houses down there have basements. It's just, do you want, is it a basement that you walk in and can't reach the ceiling? Or is it one for the furnace, hot water heater, whatever? Is it, did I answer your?
Yeah, thanks.
So Jim, if somebody constructed a basement with proper drainage and tiling around it that the city would require anyway, they would probably have a dry basement?
I enjoy mine, so. I mean, it's, it's not like the basement door is locked, and the old basement door is, but not the new one. I mean, we enjoy it every day, so.
So if they made some of these modifications to how the house would look, you know, door to the front, garage to the rear, and maybe look at somewhat of a peak or hip roof thing, would that be more amenable to you?
Well, I mean.
As a neighbor?
I think it's hard, when they presented that, I think it's hard to envision, you know, um, to, personally, I mean, I don't even know why they presented that.
As in the drawing you see here?
This.
Yeah.
I mean. You know, I, I mean, I would, I would have thought they would have been a little more prepared with.
Sure.
I'm sure they've talked to staff. I'm sure they're aware of the, the program.
Right.
I'm going to guess that maybe incentives are going to work for them. I don't know how any of that, some of these, some of this mentions incentives if, if you're going to live there that are forgivable over ten years. I don't know how that works for someone that's building one and selling it.
And that probably goes beyond us here today.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I guess the, what I wanted to sort of show is this, it's not like this whole neighborhood is going to change to his rowhouses or whatever. I mean, I, I think what's there with some incentives or without, I mean, some of them are, are going to be there, and so it's a neighborhood and, you know, maybe you don't want, I call, honestly, I think two rowhouses like that would be like the duplexes of yesteryear, you know? You put two rowhouses in the middle of the block, I, I just don't know if that's, maybe staff could. You know, I mean, they said they weren't comfortable with this, I mean, but I can't answer that question.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Forty-foot wide.
Yep.
You know, um, the last one of these, I sort of questioned. The lots are, it, it is platted out forty-foot down through there. But I would bet, I'd bet that there's more houses on two lots or more, or three lots or more than, than the houses that are on forty-foot or, or a hundred feet, you know, two and a half, and they, two people. Not saying that there isn't, because they're on both sides of me, but. Any questions?
Yeah, Jim, you, you, you've done a great job of, of being on boards and stuff with the neighborhood and moving it in, in, in a direction where, where it's great for the neighbors and what, what are you guys looking for? Because I know you've mentioned with the, the dollars and the committee that, that's out there, and I know you spent a lot of time. What's your guys' idea or plan for, for, for the neighborhood?
Well, I mean, I, I think they have some, some pretty good ideas. And, and for the first time, uh, to be honest, I mean, Mel knows a little bit about it, but as a neighborhood leader, I kind of feel like this new plan, the city is totally thinking from outside the box. You know, they're willing to throw some money. I mean, when was the last time? Sixty grand or sixty thousand possibly, and, I mean, if this is what they end up with, sixty thousand per property, there's a hundred, hundred and thirty houses, properties? That's significant. We're not talking about neighborhood finance where it's fifteen thousand forgivable, I mean, sixty thousand. I, I would sort of argue, I mean, that just their house, if you wanted a nice eighty-foot wide lot, come down. Again, I don't know incentive-wise what they're getting to split to, but if you were looking for a house and you come down and saw that one and thought, wow, let's do an addition or whatever, second bathroom, garage, hundred thousand dollars that you live there ten years and sixty of that's forgiven? I mean, I, I think that's an important product. I would say that the plans, the one thing I sort of don't see, a lot of their plans are mul- um, high-density, and then they want medium-density and then low-density. And when you shove Beachy Flats in the back of us, you sort of put high-density right against low-density. I, I mean, I live right there, it's, I live with it every day since it's been built. I guess I, if, if they really wanted to do that, maybe it should have been all part of Beachy Flats project. You know, I, I mean, how does a plan really make that work? You know, I, I don't know. I mean.
We could probably discuss the plan in more detail, but.
Sure.
I kind of want to get back to this, Jim.
Yeah, but low-density to, to that, I mean, but yeah, I mean, I, I get it. I, I, I know what they're trying to do, I, I just wanted. Like, I agree with Bert, this isn't it.
That's the important point.
And he showed some things on his phone, I'm not sure that's it either, you know? But the, the houses in the neighborhood have the potential to be there, so anything should be sort of compatible. And I think just by looking at the provisions at the end is sort of what they're kind of coming back to, you know, the full basements, garages, off the alleys. I think they're kind of coming full circle there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good to have your comments, thank you, sir. Anybody else here to speak in opposition, since that's where we were? One more? You've got up to five minutes. Take your time.
My name is Rebecca, and I'm a neighbor, two thirty-two East Livingston Avenue, right next door. And with that being built, it's not going to give very much room for if there's a fire or anything. I've been in the medical field for twenty-five, twenty-six years, and I know how far it can be for escape. If there's going to be elderly people next door, they need to have more access to be able to get out. I've been at my house for fifteen years. And I don't think it's a good idea. Nobody doesn't come up to me, knock on the door and ask for me as a homeowner other than, do you want to sell your property? No. I will die in my bed. I'm done.
All right, thank you, Rebecca, appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you, Rebecca, appreciate your comments. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff?
Well, I'm just gonna add, Jim, Jim did a good job at summarizing the planning process that this neighborhood's going through right now. It is one of the city's four targeted neighborhoods. If you're familiar with, the city's neighborhood development division is currently doing four neighborhood plans, so this is still in the planning phase, so the plan hasn't been adopted yet, but part of that planning process is to, you know, determine what types of development would be appropriate in this neighborhood, and then to also set what kind of development incentives should be offered as well. So I know Jim was throwing out that sixty thousand, I think that's just a number that's being discussed right now, I don't think that really has any bearing for today's hearing on this, but.
What about the curb cuts? What's, what would happen to them if they just put the garage in the back?
Well, that would, it's a good thing to bring up, you could have added a condition that says the curb cuts along East Livingston shall be restored, because if you go with our staff recommendation, the garages would have to be accessed off of the rear, but there's nothing that says they couldn't put a driveway into the front now, so I think you bring up a good point.
Anything else for Bert while he's here? Okay. All right. Okay, Michael, since we had some opposition, you can have some closing comments, and maybe you want to address a couple of things that were brought up. Leave that up to you.
So we appreciate the comments from the neighbors, and we do want it in line with, with the neighborhood, and making sure that we blend in with, with the neighborhood. And that being said, if you look at other areas that the city's trying to look at, emulating in some capacity, East Nashville, or Austin, or Portland, they're trying to find, you know, this, the ability to not only just scrape and build everything, but keep some of the eclectic community, the older houses, in addition to new construction, how do you blend that? And some of it's having that, that juxtaposition between old and new, contemporary versus traditional, and so we'll be working pretty heavily with the city. This, this, this does not work without city incentives. We are, we are, we are overbuilding in that neighborhood, and so we're gonna have to be working very closely with the city staff. This isn't gonna be something where we just slap up without any design criteria, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna be using the city, and if, and if we can't get city incentives and that doesn't go through, then there, there's no possible way to build, because the, the demand's not there, and we couldn't price it at a, at a standpoint that, that we could make any money. So we're really trying to work with the city on how do we, as a developer, make profit, but also use their money effectively like it was our own. So one of those criterias that we're trying to push is no basement, because we're not trying to ask for sixty-two thousand dollars for these two, these two, or sixty-two plus sixty-two, we're not asking for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of city incentives to build these. We don't think it's appropriate for a developer to take sixty-two thousand dollars worth of city funding to build these. So there's, there's ways in which we're trying to cut costs to make it effective, and our buyer pool is, is really young professionals or baby boomers that are now downsizing, so it's our opinion that these forty-foot lots will be very effective for those types of buyers, the buyers that want more of an urban feel, and we hope that at some point families will start to move back in as well, but this is the, the catalyst to start that, that movement of, you know, can someone come in and build a custom home on an eighty-foot lot? Of course, we would love that, but we just haven't seen that in a neighborhood like this at, at this point. So that, that's why we're trying to, to, to look at it more from a, a small forty-foot lot. And then the driveway in, in the front, we don't have any problem, if we're gonna sell this thing, we don't want a clunky driveway in the front, we want a sidewalk with some grass. It's gonna be much more appropriate for us to sell with, without a driveway in the front, so. And I, and I guess maybe just back up a bit, too, you know, Madden Construction builds a lot of great products in Des Moines, but we're not looking to build a Madden-type construction. This is not really affordable product. The city doesn't want more affordable products in this type of a neighborhood, they're trying to push the neighborhood to revitalize it, and so we're trying to look at it from that standpoint, not from how do we build something that's super affordable, and, and that's, that's where we're coming from. We're trying to align with the city with their revitalization, revitalization plan, so.
All right, good closing, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. Any off-the-cuff thoughts? Since this is in my ward, I do know Mr. Post pretty well, these forty-foot lots come up a lot, and yes, they were platted at forty feet, and yes, we have some houses that sit on the forty-foot lots that have been around for a hundred-plus years, but the city still requires a total of fifteen-foot inside yard, you know, about an average of seven and a half. I remain concerned about kind of quote cramming a house in now and getting down to only five-foot side yards. That is starting to get really, really close for me. If you look at this neighborhood, yes, down in the bottom, there are some that are on the forty-foot lots, but a lot of these lots, they're forty-foot, they're under common ownership, and they're not developed. They got an apple tree on them, I got a wider yard, or they're underdeveloped. I see some just got a shed on them, some are still being used for undeveloped through-streets or alleyways, like Southeast Second there. So I'd like to find a way to hit that blend where we're not just cramming something in, but yet we understand this is a denser urban neighborhood, just like Michael referenced. So I still remain concerned about the density. I'm also concerned that, I like these guys, and I like what they're trying to do, but you guys have been in front of us a number of times now, and we get a little black-and-white drawing, and suddenly we've got ten changes to it to get us to approve something. I'd like you guys to be thinking through this a little more before you get in front of us. It doesn't have to be congruent, it doesn't have to look like a nineteen-ten-style farmhouse or Montgomery Ward playing house, but it needs to be something complimentary. And what I saw up there, I didn't find that, yes, it's new urban, but it's not complimentary. And I don't want to sit here and pick color charts and carpet samples to help you figure out how to do your facade. I would have liked to see some little better homework on that. So I remain concerned about everything that's been put out here today by the applicant.
I agree with you on that. Forty-foot-wide lots, we're doing a lot of them, and when we're doing the affordable housing, I think that's appropriate, but when you were trying to do something that's not the affordable housing, doing something a little more upscale, you're not gonna cut it with a one-car garage and no basement. And then I'm also concerned in that area, if you're trying to build a more expensive home, with my past background in appraisals, I don't see any comparable sales within a mile that that would promote a higher price, and so then you have a house sitting on the market that's not selling because we don't have a cash offer. I, I just don't know if it's thought through enough yet, and I just don't know if, if these house designs are appropriate for the forty-foot lot in where we are at, and I know you mentioned some other communities, Knoxville, Austin, whatever, but that's not Iowa, and I've been, past experience, a builder came up with all his houses from Dallas that sold like hotcakes, and we had to do major remodels to sell them in Iowa, because I sat and went through four different agents before someone said, hey, that's not gonna fly here, we gotta do something. So I'm, I'm concerned, too, I mean, I like you guys, I love your enthusiasm, but just something about this just isn't hitting right.
So if there's any other discussion or emotion?
Yeah, I've got some discussion. I think they've made their case pretty well, I, I think, you know, I'm inclined to trust that, you know, developers who are taking a risk are evaluating the market and, you know, taking that risk on themselves, I'm not sure if that plays into much of my determination of how I'm, I'm viewing it. I think their plans are good, I think revitalization here would be good, and I think the forty-foot lots, given what we're looking at right here on the screen, it's more than a third, it looks like to me, if you can look at those kind of two, three levels of, of rows, most of the lots are forty-foot lots, so that seems compatible with the neighborhood, and they're amenable to all the design things, I think it would be nice to have, as Mel pointed out, since, since they've been kind of attacked or, or prompted with further design review and a couple of other times, it probably would help their case to, to bring in something initially, but that said, they're amenable to whatever the city's gonna require, and clearly the city has some strong opinions about that to fit the neighborhood, and so I'd, I'd support their request.
Well put. Would that be a motion?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be efficient on, so I don't, I don't want to propose the motion and then get, and get voted down, so I'll wait, or, or let someone else propose the other side.
Yeah, any other comments or a motion one way or the other from anyone?
The staff recommendation makes it, I mean, if they're gonna build something, it's gotta be in conformity with the neighborhood that already exists, correct?
Yeah.
To the satisfaction of the city's planning administrator, yeah, so.
I think that's what the neighbors want to do, because they're putting in a lot of work, and they have over time of, of getting where they're wanting to go, or where they're at.
And with what staff has heard and, and what they've even said, changes they could make in some of those newer designs, they've probably come back and provide something to staff that would reflect a little more of today's discussion.
And with the neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, I'll get it started, I guess. I'm gonna move staff recommendation, but instead of number seven, provision of a full basement, we include a requirement that they remove the curb cut in the driveway out, or, or, yeah, I guess, put back in the curb and remove the driveway in the front.
And not have the full basement?
And not have the full, full basement.
I'll second that. Is that clear enough, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second to grant the requested exception subject to staff recommendations with the change in number seven to eliminate the full basement and take out the curb cut and no front drive. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, those opposed. Okay, all right, so, motion carries five to two, I'm sure you'll have a great product, worked with the planning administrator, and we got a good neighborhood leader here with Mr. Post, keep talking with him. Okay, that'll bring us to item sixteen, an exception, oh, yes, Dave has to check out, he told me that earlier today, thank you for your time and attention today, Dave, and Nathan, we're keeping you to the end. Just teasing you a little. Okay, item sixteen, an exception variance request at fifty-thirty East Fourteenth Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the property in front of us is up along East, excuse me, East Fourteenth Street and I believe it's Northeast Fiftieth Place. You may know this location as Montana Mikes. They are proposing to move their existing pole sign from its current location to a little bit further north, so the original pole sign's here, a little bit further north into their parking lot. This is a proposal due to, the appellant has told us that part of their land is being acquired by the Iowa DOT for a street widening project, and so the area where their sign is currently located will be impacted. And then about, I think I counted earlier, it was about eight parking spaces north of where it's currently located. It will be on a zero lot line, they will need a number of variances and one exception to do all of this. Here is a image from the other week of their existing pole sign. This was legally installed and has been operating for a number of years at this location. And then, you can see where some of the land that'll be acquired. Staff feels that, given that the, when the city has to acquire a land right-of-way for street widening projects, we always work with impacted property owners to modify their pole signs into monument signs and compensate accordingly, and we feel that in this case it's appropriate for the Iowa DOT to do the same thing. So in this case, right now, we are recommending denial of the request so that the appellant can work with Iowa DOT.
So the DOT would reimburse them for, because they're taking part of their land to move the pole sign?
To modify the pole sign into a monument sign.
Into a monument sign, yeah, okay.
So when DOT puts their compensation package together, how much they're paying to buy the right-of-way, they include a, some funding to help give them a new sign that meets that city's requirements?
Which is what the city does.
Yeah, which is what you do, and what you're saying it'd be reasonable to have DOT have the same approach.
Correct.
Okay. And Catherine, not, not to do trivia on this, but this is very near the north end of the city limits, is that correct? Are the city limit boundaries shown on this? I see we have some zoning boundaries. Is that entire area in the picture in city limits?
This is now within the city limits, I.
Get your zoning, is the blue your zoning district then?
That would be zoning lines.
Those are also the.
Incorporated lines then, aren't they? Yeah, so when we're outside of the blue lines, we're out into Polk County now, so this is a very narrow strip that's now in the city. Does anybody generally know when this was annexed into the city?
I believe it was in the staff rec.
And what I'm getting at, did the existing pole sign, was that already in place before it was annexed? Which means it would have been approved under someone else's zoning ordinance and not ours.
Country kitchen.
Yeah, it used to be the country kitchen, and then they actually came to the board back in two thousand and eight and got a variance for the sign that's up there now.
Okay.
But then since two thousand and eight, we've amended or adopted the FSO freestanding overlay district sign, and we've also added regulations to the electronic reader board signs, so there's multiple different layers of ordinances that are in place now that weren't when they put the sign up eleven years ago.
Exactly, yeah, including if, way back in the day, if they were even in the city, which they probably weren't, okay, as in the property. All right. Any questions for Catherine then further? All right, thank you very much. Okay, applicant. I hope you guys get paid by the hour and not by the job. She waited patiently a long time today.
My name is Scott Anderson, I'm the president of Performance Sign, representing Montana Mikes and Dave Lilly. I believe that the burden on the board today is, did Montana Mikes create their own hardship? He didn't, the DOT helped him with that. We proposed to move it to the middle of the parking lot. This has been an ongoing thing that we've talked about. Dave, the problem with changing the sign is the electronic message board is no longer within the city ordinance, the size of the sign is no longer within the city ordinance, and as we know, these poles can't be there. We proposed to do something different. This is the size of sign that he could have now, that should fall within the city regulations. Again, Montana Mikes did not create his own hardship, the sign would be taken down, would not be removed from the property, it would just be transported over, new footings dug and installed. We also proposed to do some green space around there to beautify the area, so to speak. The sign probably has eight to ten years' worth of life expectancy left in it versus being taken to a salvage yard and scrapped.
So Scott, with, with what you showed, you're kind of showing a derivative of a monument sign in that previous picture? Is that one of the options, or is that not what you want to do?
We want to just remove the sign from its current location and put it here.
Yeah, sure, as, with, with the legs and the pole.
Yeah, I just did this rendering just to see, show you, show the board what the sign, what a proposed sign would look like that falls within the city guidelines.
Sure, well, I like that.
The problem is, Dave Lilly, that's gonna pay the bill, doesn't like that at thirty thousand dollars.
I thought the DOT reimbursed.
Yeah, yeah, shouldn't part of.
I'm gonna let Dave take the floor on that one, because he's been involved in those discussions.
Granted, with all due credit, you are the sign guy, so you're not an eminent domain expert, right, on property-taking?
Correct. I was kind of surprised that they just did that, but.
Right, okay. All right, if you want to share the stage with Scott, go for it.
Sure, I'm Dave Lilly, the owner of Capital Foods, doing business as Montana Mikes. To answer the question about the DOT compensating for that, they are only given depreciated value of the sign there. If I recall, it's only gonna be around fifteen thousand dollars is what they've proposed so far. I believe it's gonna cost a lot more than that to construct a monument sign. So I was hoping that we could just take our existing sign and, and move it north forty feet, I think is approximately. So I was hoping that we could just take our existing sign and, and move it north forty feet, I think is approximately the, the feet, you know, and put new footings in it and reconnect it to the electricity and be done with it.
Well, Dave, one, one of the things that was brought up was that, yeah, there's three or four related sign ordinance things that this would generally violate by allowing it to be retained or if we granted a variance to allow you to keep it. So we've had other people that, whether it's, um, a street widening or something else, um, when it's time to replace the sign, for whatever reason, it's time to meet the requirements. So, um, have you bid out the cost to build a new monument sign that maybe doesn't look like this, but could be done within fifteen thousand and still meet reasonable requirements for your customers?
That I would refer to, to Scott, who's in the sign business.
Okay, I mean, that'd be a question I'd ask as an owner. Hey, look, the city says I can't keep this. How much would it cost to build the new one?
I know I'm meeting with the DOT tomorrow morning, depending on our outcome of, of here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if, if, if they took out your, you know, front yard and your culvert and your driveway, I would think they'd have to compensate you fairly to replace it. So I could see the same thing here on a sign, but I understand there's depreciation, you know.
I think you could argue that they owe you a little bit more than depreciation, but that's a
Yeah.
marketing strategy.
Yeah, 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 that's the art of the deal. Right, maybe beyond us. Okay, anything else you want to add, Dave?
Well, just the height requirement as well, I think is only eight feet. You know, where ours currently is twenty feet or so.
Bigger's better for signage, right?
Well, of course, bigger's better, and if you go to a, an eight-foot, uh, structure, you know, and people park next to it, it's, it's gonna block, you know, the part of that sign where there be a, you know, because we have construction trucks and stuff that eat at the restaurant quite often and
Sure.
I just think it'll obstruct the view of it, so...
So even moving it onsite, if you did a monument sign, you're saying you would have very few places to put the sign?
Correct.
In a monument setting, without it being blocked?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why we're asking, or that's why I'm proposing to keep the pole sign for the height.
All right. All right, any questions for Dave? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff?
Well, I, we're gonna say, the sign guy, um, did he have an idea what a monument sign would cost?
Twenty and a third.
Okay.
I would also point out that this shows a twelve-foot height, which I think, I heard him say it can only be eight feet, so if the board would even consider this, you'd also have to grant an exception of four feet over the height, and then we'd also have to verify that this is no larger than twenty-four square feet of electronic reader board, so... Looks like, it looks like a six, seventy-two inches by four feet, so it looks like that would meet the requirement.
What is our usual monument sign?
Sorry, what was that?
What's our usual monument signs, um?
The maximum height could be eight feet with a minimum twenty-five percent of that height being the base. So if it was a twelve-foot tall base, or a twelve-foot tall sign, it would still need a three-foot tall base, so, which it looks like he probably has a three-foot.
Or could make one, yeah.
Yeah, could make a three-foot.
Masonry base, you're saying?
Right.
Yes, yes. Okay.
So basically, I, I did that reading the code and I, I was reading about how much
It's general, yeah.
And then it was in a C one or C two, I can't remember, this one, like, half, um, that you could have a twelve-foot tall.
Yeah, we, we won't be able to hear you for the record there, Scott, but, but I think, I think staff, staff heard what you said and Bert can address this.
I would point out that the FSO regulations, the freestanding overlays, or sign overlay district says that if located within twenty-five feet of a front property line, the sign shall be no more than eight feet in height. If located more than twenty-five feet from the front property line, it could be up to twelve, I'm sorry, up to fifteen feet in height.
Okay. Still with the proper base requirements that go with it and everything, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation. I didn't already say that.
This is my area. I drive by this several times a day. And I know that there are a lot of tall signs around there, but we have to keep in mind that as things age out, they're gonna be changing over, and I do like the monument signs. It does give, um, Des Moines its signature kind of look. I think Montana Mike's has enough of a reputation. We don't need to have that big, bold sign. And yeah, it's gonna cost more to replace it than they're giving you right now. I think you can negotiate some on that, but you said you have eight to nine years left, and I'm sure there's some that's gonna be lessened on that as you move it, as opposed to a new one's gonna have your twenty years or whatever. I'm not in favor of keeping the pole sign. I, I think, you know, going the monument sign, we've been pretty strict about that, and, um, I think it would just make it look classier.
Are you in favor of granting an exception to the height requirement so they can build a taller sign like this that they proposed or they've shown? If it's a monument sign?
Yeah, if we can do a higher monument sign, I'm fine with that along the area because it is quite busy as you get off the freeway there.
He could have a practical difficulty with existing site. Now he has less site to work with because the DOT bought it from him, and there could be some blockages there, but then it also goes to meet the intent of the ordinance, which is to reduce the clutter and restore neighborhood character even in a commercial district. So maybe kind of meeting in the middle? It's a good idea. So, maybe have a motion one way or the other?
Yeah, I'm with Lynn, so, I mean, I'd move that we deny the variance but grant an exception to the height request. I guess there are multiple variance requests. So...
Do you want to allow the electric reader board?
I don't, I don't care.
Well, you could go through the, yeah, you could go through the appeals there, either in order...
So I think it's just capped at twenty-four square feet, right, the reader board? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll deny the, I mean, what I would do is deny the variance request for that. I think that's sufficient for the information they're trying to get out. So grant an exception for the height, which is one above that, so it'd get up to twelve feet if they wanted. Deny the variance. The other variance request, that it be a monument sign, or that it not be a monument sign, I guess is what they're asking. The variance of a provision that states any sign shall not be less than twelve feet above grade. What does that mean?
Explain that, and that's one of the reasons we're rewriting our zoning ordinance is because we have conflicting regulations. Right now, the C two district sign regulations say that any sign, um, how does it read? Any sign located within twenty feet of a street right of way, or he says, no portion of any sign within twenty feet of this street right of way shall be less than twelve feet above grade. So the C two district regulations actually require pole signs.
So, so the overlay, um, covers everything, um, and, but the C two regulations would be, need to be relieved in order to give them any sign.
Yeah, yeah, they're old regulations from pole sign days.
Right.
So we'd need to grant that variation just to be...
So we grant that variance?
Yeah.
To, so they can have any sign, right now? Okay. And then the other, the last one is an exception over the maximum square footage.
Would that be so they could incorporate their existing electronic reader board? That's a variance too.
Wait, why, why is that a variance request? It says exception request because it's only, their maximum square feet is, is one fifty-two, and they're actually asking for less than that, although I don't know what this design would be if that...
We're gonna start getting into a lot of measurements here.
Yeah.
If you use this design as an example, you have a ten-foot width here.
Yeah.
If you draw a rectangle around everything here and you need a three-foot tall base, that would leave you ten feet by nine feet, which would be ninety square feet total, which is less than what they earn, so I don't think you would actually need an exception for the lot area, or for the signage area.
Okay.
Because this would, this would effectively be a ninety-square-foot sign, ten feet by nine feet.
Then I guess we can deny that? Got that?
I'll second whatever Nathan said.
So, so it would be denial of the first except, if you're looking at your agenda, it would be denial of the first exception, approval of the variance, denial of the next variance, revising the fourth item to be an exception of, of four feet above the height, and then denial of the final variance. And I, I was going to ask if you had any conditions on that, such as, um, you know, um, compliance with the permit from the Permit and Development Center or other standard conditions that we apply to a sign permit?
Yeah, let's do that and keep...
I'm not sure, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, I'm not sure about like dimming the sign after ten PM. It's a major commercial corridor by a freeway. I don't know if that's...
Well, there are a bunch of conditions in there from two thousand and eight that could probably be used.
Yeah.
Static for eight seconds.
Yes, we probably want to keep that.
Lighting so it doesn't shine into the road.
We're reading from pages fifty-six and fifty-seven of the, of this packet. Okay, thank you.
Is that pretty basic for electronic signs anyways?
Well, I think our ordinance has more detailed.
Okay, then we don't need to put dozens.
I think if you just had complied with the current regulations for electronic signs, you'd be okay.
Okay. I'm good with that. Was that clear enough for a second from down this way?
Yeah, I seconded.
All right, second from Lynn. Okay, I think if everybody's pretty clear on that, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, that passes six to zero. So staff will sort that out in a decision and order. It may not be everything you want, but maybe it helps us meet in the middle just a little bit. All right, thanks for your patience today, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming in. Okay, that'll bring us to item seventeen, an exception request near twenty-five ninety Easter Lake Drive.
We did get one objection, but there was no comments. I'd be sure to card some comments. And I'll start out by saying I'm glad that we got good graphics from the applicant to explain what they're attempting to do here. Um, this is a, three separate parcels, and it might be hard to see with the crosshatching, but, uh, there's a parcel here, then there's a parcel that has kind of a fronts the road here, but has a strange kind of connection that direction, and then there's kind of this larger L-shaped parcel that would all be combined and then re-divided. So this is the current configuration to give you a better feel without the aerial. And the white one is not involved at this point in time. And then they're proposing to re-divide in this fashion where there would be a, see if we can get it to stop doing that, okay. The green parcel would not comply with the zoning with regard to the lot width at the minimum required setback, but it would meet the requirement at the building line, which the building would be located back in this area. So it would certainly have the lot width in that location. I'm not sure these photos are very helpful, but we're kind of going, I'll go down the line here and kind of show some. This is kind of looking up the area where the flag would go. There's also some utilities that go up that way. A little further east. Some of these are further west that I didn't mean to get because I wasn't exactly sure even where they were at at the time, so... It's very difficult to see back into the area where the, the house would be built on here. One thing I should also point out is there is a sanitary sewer main that comes in and stops at a manhole right here at the nexus of these parcel lines. It's intended to provide the ability to develop this area back here at that point when it would occur. One of the big challenges, one of the big challenges to developing back there is, once you get over a certain number of units, you would need a secondary, um, means of egress for the fire code. So the question becomes, right now, there's, just north of this map, there's a stubbed street in, um, on the, going west into the, this parcel right here. Um, you might remember it if you remember some cell towers that were allowed up in that area just south of Easter Lake Park. But again, that, that street would be extended into that area, but there, there's a possibility that, um, another street would be pop, you know, have to be put in there to get any number of units because you can't have more than thirty single-family residential units without a secondary means unless they're all sprinkled. Which is very challenging then, of course, economically, to do all the homes as sprinkled at this point. And so that's another element that's kind of playing into this consideration is this, how, how is this plat gonna, how would this plat affect the ability to develop in this area? So staff wanted to look into that as part of this process. So there is some unusual criteria for this type of exception, so if you look at the criteria that the board is to consider, it is, this, there is the standard exception criteria that their design, construction, operation adequately safeguard the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants on adjoining, of adjoining and surrounding property, shall not impair the adequate supply of light, air, and adjacent to property, shall not unduly increase congestion in the public streets, shall not increase public danger of fire and safety, and shall not diminish or impair, establish property values. That's applicable to all exceptions, but in this case, with the lot width consideration, it's different than the practical difficulty you usually see with an exception request. Instead, it's the development pattern of the lot is in harmony with the development pattern of the neighborhood in which it's located. The development has unique terrain, views, or vegetation, and the development is consistent with the density of the adjoining lots. I think staff could find number two, that it, it does have unique terrain, views, and vegetation. I think we are challenging that it would not really be consistent with the density of existing lots. If you look at lots to the west of it, I think you could make that argument, but there's newer development directly to the east, which certainly is not in the development pattern or in the density, uh, in this case. So I think from that standpoint, staff was not able to find that it, that it met that test. So staff is recommending denial based on that finding. However, uh, should the board determine that this is within those criteria? We did offer ten, um, conditions that we would recommend, and I think the ones that are probably, uh, important to note are that any building shall be constructed with a sanitary sewer. We would want it, this considered under a We would want it, this considered under a major plat, reviewed and approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission and the City Council, including public utility extensions and adequate public street extensions that would be necessary to serve the remaining land that would get further locked into the, to the east, or to the north, I'm sorry. We want to make sure there's, there's basements. Most of the other standards are kind of the typical things that we want to see in those single-family dwellings that would be built on the parcels that are being considered. And we, such as garages and storage space and proper materials. We do want it to meet all fire and building codes. I should point out, when we looked at this, the thought was that on the property as you're looking at right now, a street extension could be made at a, at a reasonable spacing based on consultation with our traffic engineering staff, kind of on the western portion of this. It would probably interfere with, a little bit with how the existing home there is enjoying their garage, but we could, there could potentially be a 50-foot right-of-way run north-south, and I'll just show you here in this location. So basically, the feeling is, is if we do end up dividing this out, we would want that considered where the P&amp;Z would consider the extension of a public street and utilities. Are there any questions at this point?
So you're saying a public street would be put there? It's not a driveway? Where's...
Right. So we're, we're recommending denial.
Yeah.
But if the board finds that the criteria are met, we do want this to go through a major plating, which if you look at our plating ordinance, it is designed and set up so that any development or division of land doesn't preclude the ability to develop future adjoining land...
Okay.
...by ensuring that there's extension of proper utilities, extension of public streets in order to serve that. And what we do know is that a secondary egress is going to be necessary to be able to develop that area with single-family housing, so...
Okay, I see that, yeah.
But by allowing this without that condition, we think that that'll diminish the ability to, to get a street extension in there without a major taking or something of that nature. So that's why we're asking for that as a condition. So yes, the short answer to that was yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Eric? Okay. Thank you, sir. Applicant, thank you for your patience and waiting today. Again, I hope you bill by the hour.
Good afternoon. Doug Saltz, Gaver Engineering Resource Group, 2413 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. And when I did arrive here at 1:00, my hair was black, just to let you know. So I haven't been here a while.
Low humor is good.
Real quickly, Eric did a good job of explaining what we're trying to do. This is how the properties are currently set up. The instigator of all of this, Jeff Reeves, who is here today, his overall intent is to acquire land behind where he currently lives and where his son could build a house. So this is the configuration today, and I've got to give him credit because he's got to get two other people involved in this to sell and re-acquire some land. So this would be roughly the outcome. We might make one change that... that may go together, but the outcome would still be the same, that there would be attractive land behind where Jeff Reeves lives now that could build a house on. And the reason we're asking for this exception, we're not able to get 90-foot of frontage out to Easter Lake Drive because of an existing garage that's there. And because these existing homes are on septic systems, one acre is required, so when we take this flag lot off of the Folons, they go under one acre, so we have to give them back more land so that they're still in compliance. Understand staff's concern with the existing subdivision. It was platted, I think, in early 2000s, 2003, somewhere in that range. And now it not having a secondary outlet, but that is something a nod of my client's making. He had no involvement with that. It would've been very simple when this subdivision went in, that another street would have been required to stub to the west to provide another access out. They did, however, as Eric mentioned, did stub a senate, public sanitary sewer between, down the lot line between some of our now-existing homes so that that sewer could be extended. And to extend a public street, that's what we'd be looking at regardless of whether it's there or over here. And I would doubt that it could be placed over there measuring between those two existing homes. If you put in a 50-foot right-of-way, put in the 30-foot front yard setbacks, those homes aren't going to be meeting those setback requirements. Putting a public street in over here would require that garage to come out, and extending it up that far with construction, plating, utilities, we're probably close to $300,000 for putting that in. So to extend a new public street that far, that expense, that cost of $300,000, it just wouldn't be worth the hassle to do all of this to build one additional home back there. We are looking at all the 10 items here that are recommended if you would move forward with this. We're in agreement with all but number one. When we started this process, we were also told that a subdivision plat would not be required. We talked to Polk County and Des Moines Planning Staff, and they said it could be done with a plat of survey, moving all of these around. So that takes, saves some time and effort on anyone who has a mortgage and has to get lender's consent to do the plating, additional abstracting, and obviously more time going through plan and zoning and city council. So with that, we'd hope you would approve us with everything but item one. And I think we also might like to add that we could put tents back there and sell beer and fireworks and advertise it with a very tall pole sign.
Will staff would support that, or...
Transient merchants.
We could probably do without those three last things.
Have you been before us before with this plan or something similar? This sounds so familiar to me.
I've not been, I've been here many times, but I've not been with this...
Not this particular plat?
No, no.
We had this smaller situation with a similar, like a longer drive and a flag-shaped...
Right. That's why, why, why does a street need to go in there? I'm still confused on that. A street instead of a driveway?
It's like an access of future plat.
Future plat for what?
Homes.
Right. Dennis is illustrating it wouldn't be feasible to put in a street without a lot of undue hassle and headache.
So why wouldn't you just put a driveway instead of a street?
Because you have to have 90-foot of width at the street level.
I think the thought, I think the thought is to develop, if that agricultural land to the north were to ever develop into a subdivision.
Would.
Right. I mean, yeah, that's not necessarily on us or the owner.
We've never considered the other lots before.
So Dennis, excellent job of presenting this for your client. I understand completely what you want to do. Trying to figure out a little history here. These, what I want to call these like four primary properties that you kind of showed there, were those lots on the frontage of Easter Lake Drive that are about an acre a piece, like where your client has his house, were those developed when this was unincorporated Polk County? Do you know?
I believe it was. I believe it was about 1997.
Okay. So at that time, the county was probably like, hey, that's fine. If you want to just carve off an acre at the front and quote orphan some stuff in the back, we don't care.
Right.
Right? Yeah. So different set of planning, different set of zoning ordinances at the time, because otherwise I would hope the city would have been thinking to not allow this to have occurred to begin with on the old stuff. But this was when it was unincorporated Polk County. It's how that development pattern there on those four primary lots is probably set. Okay? All right. That's very helpful for me.
And I did speak with Traffic and Transportation regarding this road alignment, and I believe the exact words were, "That would not be ideal."
To have a road popping out right there.
Being that close to...
Further, further west.
Yeah. If I was to draw my own on the map, I'd go down further to the west where there's a big tree line way to the west and bring a street in. But that's not what we're really here for.
They would prefer it be...
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Lining up...
And I'm assuming that's all joint ownership there with that real deep driveway and everything? A real farm estate kind of back there?
And that's all three separate?
Who's, oh, there are. There's more. More of the, okay, shared driveway with those three. Okay.
And Traffic did say at one point that they would, they would prefer not to have another driveway out there if another lot was to go in the back, that if we could share an entrance onto...
Right.
And we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Dennis?
Doug.
Or Doug, sorry.
We're giving you a new name.
Getting late, yeah.
Witness Protection Program.
He don't need it. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant's position? Okay? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Nathan?
I don't understand the major plat versus plat of survey kind of request.
So anytime you're extending public utilities or extend, and if you're just doing public utilities, it would be a minor plat. A plat of survey is an administratively-approved plat, and a major plat involves the extension of public street infrastructure. So that's kind of the three tiers of subdivision plat review we have here in the city.
Okay.
And so we're, we're concerned, first of all, that there would be nothing at this point to, if this was done as a plat of survey, we have no leverage or any ability to compel anybody to extend the public sewer that would, this property would benefit from, for one, or be able to, it would be more, much more challenging to get an access point for a secondary street access to actually develop that land back there. Not saying that it could never happen if this didn't happen, but right now we have a situation where they're not allowed to do this by right, and so we're trying to open the opportunity to make sure that we're not interfering with future development with, by allowing it, so...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't, I don't quite understand the whole future development thing, and it seems pretty unlikely to happen right here, and also seems so entirely speculative. I don't know, know how much time we want to spend on it, but on the public utility part of it, I mean, they've already, they're, he said he's okay with number two.
Okay.
So...
I'm just saying that the extension of, the reason we wanted it to be more than just a plat of survey was for those elements.
Okay.
But you're right, number two is broken out separately.
So if we're...
But he, he wouldn't have to extend the public sewer to put his own property on public sewer. He has a manhole right at his property line. So there's nothing that would drive him to extend it further west along his north property line or something that would... Because it, I have to be honest, it was contemplated that the north part of this property would also probably be part of that more dense development at some point in the future. So that's why that location was selected for the extension of that sewer.
Yeah, I got a question now. We'll talk about that with the current three homes being on, on septic. Why couldn't this new one be on septic?
There's a very firm directive of not allowing septic if there's access to public sewers.
Okay.
There's also city code, completely separate from the board. It's not in zoning. It would be under the public works domain, but there's city code requirements to access a septic, excuse me, sanitary sewer system.
Okay. I know most brokers just do too, but I was just curious.
They have to be quite a ways away from any public sewer to be able to do that, and then they need an acre of land, which Doug mentioned, some of those are existing septic systems.
My other question, maybe you covered this when I stepped out, but why is it an exception instead of a variance?
So there's, it's actually under a separate set of criteria. When the, they meet the lot width where they're going to build the home...
Uh-huh.
...in the portion of the property, but the lot width at the minimum required front setback from the street is not meeting the lot width, so...
And so that's an exception.
And there's a separate set of criteria that are applicable to that. They're not, they're not the same as your traditional exception relief.
Okay.
It was, it was something that was created to make it more scrutiny on flag lots that were, that used to be allowed by right, actually, with 20 feet of frontage.
And is the city's concern, I still don't quite understand this street plan thing that's drawn in there. Like, is the city's proposal or future theoretical proposal that a street would go there? Or just that there needs to be...
Doug showing it where it was more practical for the, his, his client, given the three ownerships and so forth. Traffic would say the spacing of that is too close to the north-south street, to the east.
Yeah. So if it's moved over to the west, then how does it affect the, what's being asked right now?
It would affect these two, it would affect these two property owners because it'd be run in between, and it would diminish their lots.
Why not that subject, that's part of the subject property?
Yeah. It is part of the subject property, though.
Okay. But not, not, not the one that's going to end up? It's part of the subject property in there?
No, it's not part of the one they're creating, no.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
All right. We'll go ahead and close public portion, then go to board deliberation. What do you guys think?
Well, I understand where the city wants a street through there, but for this particular piece of property, it just wouldn't probably be financially feasible.
They don't necessarily want a street through there, but at some time, for that northern portion to develop where the row crops farm field is, there will need to be a secondary street that comes down to Easter Lake Drive.
And that's a big if. I, when I moved to one place, they promised a street to go through, and it took 20 years, you know, that street to go through, that promise was coming through in three.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's very speculative. That's for...
Yeah. Yeah. And to go to some of Doug's point, I don't think we can necessarily, necessarily hold somebody else responsible for needing to put in a street for somebody else's development, but the city's position is that we would anticipate remaining properties that are undeveloped in this area will be more densely developed, and that's the city's development pattern. And this would not be similar or congruent with that. If we go way back in time, I don't know what Gary Pryor and Chris Veer were thinking of Polk County planning and zoning when this plat was approved to allow these five lots, if you will, to show up like this. Somebody decided that they wanted to go around the back door of the other four lots and have this connected lot. That may not be the person that currently owns their, owns that west side lot.
You were just doing, selling it off, breaking it off for a son or a daughter or a friend?
He might have been back in the day, but, and I know it's not a variance test, but that was at the time the, something that the owner's own making was caused. It wasn't... It wasn't unique to the land in question, they chose to subdivide it that way. So apparently, they wanted to enjoy coming around and being on top of the backside of these other four lots forever. So I, I see where the applicant's coming from, but I also see how it just continues more of the disjointed development that this area is already seen mostly under, when it was in unincorporated Polk County. And how do we break that cycle?
I'll make a motion to, to move it with the 10 exceptions or criteria that the staff has put in there.
Do you want to do the major plat, or do you want to just do the survey plat?
I just leave it the way it is, the way it was explained to Nathan.
So if they want to get it done the way they want, you're going to have to do some homework. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Just a motion, if not, no big deal.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion by John, a second by Lynn. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, motion carries unanimously, six, zero. Okay, not sure if that's all of what you wanted, but perhaps it's some. Okay, that'll move us to item number 18, a conditional use permit request at 3207 Douglas Avenue.
Item number 18 is a request for beer sales by a limited food and retail sales establishment. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Douglas Avenue and Lower Beaver Road. It's just across from the Veterans Affairs Hospital. The subject property contains a commercial building that has two tenant bays. One, the western portion is occupied by the existing small grocery store. And then the eastern portion is occupied by a separate commercial use. The applicant is proposing beer sales only, no wine or liquor. And I believe their beer would be stored right here in close proximity to the front counter. Here's a picture of the property along Douglas Avenue. Again, it's in the western portion of the building, the separate therapy business is in the eastern portion. There's a driveway along the west side of the building to the parking lot in the rear. Here's another view of that same building. And then here's the backside of the building viewed from the parking lot. And I believe the entrance to the store is on the west side of the building. There, so here is the consent map, we had a comment card, I'll pass these around. One from the Veterans Affairs Hospital, and then one from the Prospect Park Neighborhood Association. Staff believes that they have satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit. It meets the separation distance requirement since there aren't any churches, schools, parks, or daycares within 150 feet of the property. There used to be a religious assembly just directly across the prop, or street to the east, but it recently moved. And it's now in office use. So we have recommended approval subject to 11 conditions. One, that the sale of beer shall only be ancillary to a limited food and retail sales establishment and shall derive no more than 40% of their overall sales from beer or tobacco products. And then two, the sale of alcoholic liquor and wine shall be prohibited. And then the rest of the conditions are just the standard conditions, so I won't read through those. Any questions for me?
Again, Bert, the only portion where they want to sell just beer is that one little cooler shown on their drawing.
I believe so.
Okay. We can ask the applicant that, but yeah, okay.
This would be, north would be up, and these are the two doors on the west side of the building?
Yep.
You'd have the counter right when you come in the door, and then the beer cooler right there.
All right. All right, thank you.
I did forget to pass around the card from the Beaver Down Neighborhood Association that was in support.
Okay. All right, oh, sorry, all right, applicant, applicant or representative of the applicant? It's your guys' turn, you've waited all afternoon. Thank you for your patience.
The poor gentleman that said that he had dark hair and now white, I used to have hair.
You can file a claim with the city.
I'm the owner of the property and.
And your name is?
Mike Donahue, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's quite all right.
My address is 1155 20th Street in West Des Moines.
Okay.
The tenants started off on the east side of the building. They grew to take over the far west side and the center of the building. And now it was presented that there are two tenants in there, and it's going to go to one. They're going to take over the rental of the building totally. So the beer is incidental. This is a Burmese family, there's a language issue, that's why I'm speaking for him. He's been a very, the family's been a very good tenant for the past six years. And so I just wanted to make sure that I could help them in, in this process. So I think that's really, from what I've heard today, this is pretty, I think, helpful from the staff's position in the research that they've done, and would appreciate your help today.
So they've been operating kind of a grocery convenience store?
It is.
Or what kind of things are they selling? It says stuff on a lot of the shelves there.
Yeah, no, it, well, it's very specific to their history. So you have frozen foods, dry. And it's just a full line of anywhere from car, you know, rugs to all of vegetables and things of that sort, I don't know exactly.
So it could be general merchandise, but there's also foodstuffs or maybe ethnic food cuisine?
It's 100% food.
All right, so it's all foodstuffs, okay.
Absolutely.
And they hadn't been selling beer to date, but that's what they would like to add, is continue to expand the groceries, but add this one cooler of beer.
Correct.
Okay.
And is this pretty much like ethnic foods, so like, or is it like added to their culture? Is like, you know, we see stores that, I've got one in my neighborhood that, you know, if you don't speak Spanish, you don't go in there and buy things.
It's very much ethnic.
Yeah, yeah, it caters to, to folks who like that.
There is a Burmese population that's north of Euclid, around the Lower Beaver area.
Okay.
What would their general hours of operation be, or what are they?
I would say they would be nine in the morning, or excuse me, nine in the morning until 10 at night, nine at night.
Nine till nine, okay, seven days a week? Okay, so 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, okay? Easy enough? Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Okay, I'm not saying because you stay late, it gets easier, but but that was pretty, pretty quick and good, so.
It was interesting.
Yeah. All right.
I have no idea what to say now, too.
Yeah. All right, well, you can go ahead and sit down, Mike. Is there anybody to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody to speak in opposition to the applicant? Do we have any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
Well, I see staff is recommending approval, and I'm tending to go towards that, especially since, you know, they've been in operation for eight years. They don't open past nine, and with theirs being very much a culture or ethnic-centered store, they're not going to be getting in the local drunk to go in and buy some beer. It, it just wouldn't fit, I mean, I guess it, the story in my neighborhood, I don't go into, it's just, I don't understand it. So I, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
I'd second that with a friendly amendment. I'd like the hours to be limited to 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, as they've said they would or are.
How about like no later than 9:00 PM? I mean, if they open up at seven, if they decide to change their hours?
Yeah, yeah. No later than 9:00 PM, suppose, you know, they can't open earlier than 12 and 9. Yeah, how about no earlier than 6:00 AM and no later than 9:00 PM?
Sounds good.
Yeah. And beer sales shall be limited to the general location and area as illustrated by the applicant. We kind of had that earlier today, so very similar condition. And that'd be my friendly second amendment. Or second amendment to make a second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries six, zero. Okay, so I think we're approved for what you want, we're glad you're doing business in Des Moines. You bet, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. We have to approve minutes from last month, anybody who was here can make motions and vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Marla, so all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That was everybody but Nathan, so that carries five, zero. Okay, all right, I want to thank everybody for your dedication and your service tonight. Have a good evening, this hearing is adjourned. All right, thank you.